Good evening, at 7:05. Welcome to the September 24th meeting of the Planning Board. A little bit of housekeeping. We are being recorded by HCAM and also by audio. The relevance of that is whether or not you choose to behave on TV and then, more importantly, if you're going to speak, we need you to speak into the microphone so it can get picked up for everybody at home. We will try and do the same. So, the first item on the agenda is 11 Bank Avenue and 103 and 105 North Street. We will hear from the applicant and then have some questions. And this is the first of the presentations on this, so it's preliminary. I will say that Ted Matthews is sitting in on the A3 portion of this and our colleague Judy Sneeth is recused as a butler. So with that, I guess I'm going to turn it over to you, Walter, to kick it off.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, I'm Walter Sullivan. I'm the applicant, John Barry's attorney, on this project. This is a special permit site plan review. We also need a special permit, A3, for the parking. Our team will include Sevi Strakalovsky, the architect. We have the project engineer, John Cavanagh from Cavanagh and Associates. And also Francisco Laverre is here tonight from McMahon Associates to talk about traffic. By way of background, how we got here, we filed in July. We met preliminarily with the ZBA because we had an ambiguity that we wanted some clarification on. And as we indicated when this hearing was opened and then continued, we've significantly scaled down the project. And so, John will talk about that. Going forward, we have the ZBA tomorrow night. We preliminarily have the Historic Commission on Thursday. The actual hearing before the Historic Commission will be October 18. I know there was some concern that somehow we might be trying to skirt that process, and of course, we're not. So without any further ado, I would ask John Cavanagh to talk about where we are right now with the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. I might just take this off.
Yeah.
If I can use this and refer to some plans. We do have a lot of plans up here this evening, so I might, Sevi, if it's okay, just move one over here. It's a beautiful collection that he has on display. But for the sake of just trying to get things so that you can see and perhaps some of the folks in the audience can see as well. I'm not sure that I'm going to be able to satisfy everybody's viewing pleasure, but what I'll do is I'm just going to walk through where we were preliminarily. Just as Walter mentioned, this project has gone through several additions, even though the Planning Board really hasn't seen several additions. This is the first time we're going to be in front of you, but there has been a lot of revisions, actually, as you can see in some of Sevi's illustrations. Back when we started looking at this and we came to the quick conclusion that we needed a determination from the ZBA, we had a proposal, which was the plan that you see in front of you here, which was, it was about a 12,000-square-foot footprint for a building. It was a relocation of a carriage house that was about 700 square feet or so. There was the existing building that has remained unchanged and will remain unchanged throughout the whole process. This building had 20 units in it, and it also had a large paved surface that was proposed to go around the project. This was sort of a, wouldn't call it a max build, because it actually, due to the zoning requirements, this doesn't seek any relief and this could even be even larger. But the thought here was that put something in that was reasonably scaled, as Sevi mentioned at our initial zoning board hearing, was in architectural character with the neighborhood, but also fit with respect to parking as well. So this was the original plan that we had. I think it even went to the Planning Board in a very preliminary fashion. It didn't end up getting open, but this did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We immediately said, "We're going to be continuing to revise this and to knock it down in scale." But I thought, just from a perspective standpoint, it was important to see. Again, we're looking at 20 units, total about 15,500 feet of building on the property, which is about 25 percent building coverage. And overall impervious was about 55 percent on this particular scan, plan. So after going through the initial zoning board hearing and Mr. Barry had met with Sevi with some of the butters to talk about the overall site and what are some opportunities to reduce the scale of the building, the scale of the development, not just the size of the building, but also the number of units. And so that was taken into serious consideration with this current plan that's in front of you this evening. But just to quickly go over the site, because for your benefit, we haven't been here before. This is an existing, partially developed, partially undeveloped piece of property. It's about an acre and a half in size. Currently, the front lot is about a 30,000-square-foot lot that fronts directly on North Street. And there's a, what you'd call, a landlocked piece that sits behind the North Street site that's about 33,000 feet. Bank Ave runs along the westerly portion of both lots. There's existing single-family homes and other buildings that are fronted on North Street. So Bank Ave, you'd never notice it if you drove by. It's a very narrow street that goes back up into these residences. So one of the things we did before getting into too much of the design was to look at the overall character of the property in terms of topography. Our first plan was a little bit more aggressive in terms of the overall impact to the site, so, and speaking with the neighbors and giving some more consideration to the topography. The plan was revised, not just to reduce it in size, in terms of number of units, but it was also reduced in terms of overall footprint on the property itself. So from that first iteration of that 12,000-square-foot footprint, this got knocked down to about 9,000 feet. I think we're a little bit over that, about 9,200 feet down from 12,000. We eliminated the circumnavigation that went around the side of the building for access with the hopes of working with the fire department to implement other fire safety measures and access to not need to build a road essentially on this very steep slope. So that was something that we've been working with the fire department with. We think we've come up with a good solution to that. But mainly, the goal here was to get the building down in size, reduce the overall footprint of not just the building, but the impervious development as well. So this went from 25 percent building, 55 percent lot coverage, down to about 20 percent building and about 42 percent lot coverage. So we've knocked both of those down with the current proposal that's in front of us this evening. So this proposal with 10 units, about 2,100 square feet of retail included in this building, also eliminated the relocation of the carriage house. So that no longer is part of this. The existing leather shop comes out of the equation. That will no longer exist, prior to the sadness of some. I had some leather products made there several years ago before a good trip. I still use them. But the site also was looked at in terms of, when we had that first zoning board hearing, one of our big questions was, "Well, how do you interpret the levels? And are we, is the story that faces the back of the apartment building, is that what we, do we need to determine that as a story?" And it was determined conceptually and in our preliminary discussions that yes, that should be counted as a story. The bylaw is written very vaguely, and we'll get an official determination from the Zoning Board of Appeals. But what we did is we proceeded with a design that considered this first level a story. So in order for this to be a story, our first proposal didn't consider that a story. So what we're doing is we're dropping the building on at grade in the front, but we considered, we're cutting the grades down for the road anyway, but we considered that the building was just going to sit into the hill. So we weren't necessarily going to drop the grade around the back of the building to make this meet the definition of a story for the first floor. This design does account for this being considered a story for the first floor, which is why the grading drops down in the back of the building so that more than 50 percent of the perimeter of the building has, meets the definition of the bylaw for the definition of a story, which is, it's a little complicated, but it's essentially, you have to maintain a minimum distance from the next above floor to the grade around the building. So in other words, it's not a basement, it's not in the ground. Enough of it is out of the ground that it is considered a story. So with a three-story maximum, that's the first, and then there would be two stories above that. So first story at grade in the front, at grade in the back. And this, these grades on the sides would try to still work with the existing contours. So we're trying to keep this steep slope as much as possible to its existing contours. In terms of drainage and utilities, this is very well-drained soil out here. We did a few test pits across the property. It's very sandy, gravelly, coarse sand, no observable water table. So what we've designed is onsite infiltration system to both capture the roof runoff and store it onsite, designed for a 100-year storm event. We have an overflow in the back of the property. Right now, the current drainage flows towards the rear, towards a collection system in between these two existing buildings, and then some down towards North Street. So we're able to balance and match all the pre- and post-development runoff characteristics with onsite stormwater management systems. I know this will, this has already been reviewed in an initial standpoint. We'll continue to work with the town's review engineer, which I'm sure we'll hear from this evening, about the details of some of the fine tuning points for the stormwater management. But essentially, it's captured onsite, it's treated, it's infiltrated, and it's, and we're able to do that due to the quality soils that are onsite. In terms of water and sewer, we have had some preliminary discussions with the sewer department. We've had a review comment letter that they do experience some issues with the existing infrastructure. They'd like us to participate in an evaluation of the existing system. So that's something that will be continuing to be ongoing, communication with the sewer department, to work with them to ensure that there is both adequate capacity and also that we're meeting all their minimum criteria for connection requirements. So that's something that will continue throughout this planning process as well. Fire, we will be sprinkling the existing, the proposed building, so fire protection will be addressed with that. Domestic service will be taken from the town water. We will be working on a landscape plan that's not part of this initial package. We wanted to get the initial discussions going, have you see the concept of the building. Sevi will continue, as Walter mentioned, to meet with historical, and so that will, that'll be continuing. So once we get to a little bit more finer tuned level, then a landscape plan would be part of that as well. With that, I think I may turn it over, unless there's any immediate questions, to Sevi to talk about the building, and then Francisco can talk about the traffic.
I think what we're proposing is a fairly low-impact development for a site that, in the overlay district, has no sideline setback requirement and no height restraint. And I think that we have gone through iterations in working with the neighbors, reducing the size of the building and trying to conform to the character of the surrounding buildings, particularly on Bank Avenue. So this building, the initial building, was a total of about 38,000 feet, 20 units, and then we came down to 18 units, and then finally to 10 units. When I say "low-impact," the idea is to have a maximum setback. In our case, we're 20 feet on the Bank Ave side, 30 feet on the eastern side, and utilizing the grades, which, there's a 12-foot change of grade from the back of this building where the leather shop is to the backside. And the concept was to put the retail in an area that could create a very, very nice little retail courtyard, kind of like an Edinburgh where I lived, little courtyard. So the idea that that retail is not part of, or North Street, it could be a very nice pedestrian-connected piece of North Street. And then to take the essentially one- and two-story elements of the building that are above the lower level, with the retail and the parking pretty much buried in the hill, so that facing Bank Avenue, we have one story, one and a half stories, maybe get a little loft space up above there. So it's completely a one-story elevation that faces Bank, and we feel is very respectful of the scale of Bank Street and it had broken up the elements of the building on that side to do that. We did a comparison of, through the site in a couple of directions to show relative height and scale. This is a section across, of course, parallel to North Street with the church and the bank. And this is the Bank Ave, the first house on Bank Ave. And this is the lower level where our retail would be, which is, means that all the traffic coming to utilize retail and come into the parking is completely disconnected from the residential piece of Bank Ave. The ridge is no higher than budding houses. The section of the other direction with North Street here and 103, 105 North Street, our lower-level parking, shows that, you know, these are compatible and that this is the one-story character of the Bank Ave facing elevations. These are all the elevations from the front of the retail and the parking access. The Bank Ave elevation showing the scale of the broken-up roof forms. Rear elevation, long-sloping roof, long-sloping roof toward Bank Ave with some dormers. And the east side, which will be set into the hillside. Well, firstly, with the HTC, get into some details for this building, but they'll be completely in character with other Hingham historic buildings.
So now for traffic. Something I should have mentioned, too, is we just got the peer review for reports from John and from traffic. So we're going to have to address those further at our continued hearing, so.
Francisco, if you would address that. Thank you.
My name is Francisco Laverre, McMahon Associates, for the record. We developed the traffic impact study for the proposed development. And as John was mentioning, we used the latest version of the development that assumes 2,100 square feet of retail on the first floor and nine units of residential that will be added to the existing condition. We are also considering that the existing five apartments that are in the building will remain. The traffic impact study that we did included obtaining traffic counts in the intersection of North and Bank Street, North Street and Bank Avenue. The counts were obtained in the middle of the summer, in August 15, and Wednesday and on Saturday, on August 18. We compared the volumes on a nearby continuous counting station to verify that the traffic volumes in the month of August are higher than the average for a, for the, higher than the monthly average in the year. So in order to provide a conservative analysis, we did not make any adjustments down on the traffic volumes that we could have done. The roadway characteristics of North Street, as well as Bank Avenue, are conducive for a very low-speed environment. North Street even has a 15 mile-an-hour posted speed limit. We looked also into the existing crashes that are taking place in the area of the project study. And we identified that between 2011 and 2015, there were five crashes that took place in this intersection. Only one of them had injury as a result of the crash. The other ones were property damage only. And most of them were a side swipes with a parking vehicle. So even though they were, the resulting crash rate, that is resulting average crash rate from these numbers are a little bit higher than the average for the district and for the state. The low-speed nature of the road is very conducive to almost no injuries. The one that resulted in injury was a car that hit a pedestrian, which is very likely to result in an injury in those cases. The traffic volumes that we obtained were projected in the future to account for seven-year horizon, as indicated in the MAS DOT guidelines for traffic studies. We use a 1.5 percent of average growth rate. The counting station that we use for reference provided that in the last years, there has been a 1.26 percent, but we use 1.5 to provide a more conservative approach. On top of that expected growth, we also included the development that has been approved at Six Station Street that is including 4,800 square feet of retail and eight apartments. And we use that scenario to develop what we call a no-bill condition, in which if the project doesn't take any, doesn't come to realization, this is the volumes that you would expect in the roadway network. On top of that, we use the ITE Traffic Handbook to generate projected volumes based on the size of the retail, as well as the number of apartments that are proposed. And we added that projected trips, projected traffic generated to the no-bill condition, creating a bill condition, in which we can have now a comparison of what would happen in the future if the project doesn't take place versus when the project is added. Retail and residential have different type of traffic generation, but also new trips that are included in the roadway network. If, simple words, if we're building a house, someone is going to be living there. So there is going to be a new traffic, a new trip that will be added to roadway network because there is someone who's coming to the dwelling at the end of the day and will be leaving to work in the morning. But when you're talking about a retail, there may be some instances in which the store that is present here may attract new trips, but also there will be instances in which traffic that is already on the road will decide to make, deter, any various in different cases. So we used percentages that are included in the IT handbook to estimate how many of those trips that will be coming to the retail are already vehicles that in the roadway network and will not be added to the roadway network. Using all those numbers, we determined that in the morning will be, the expected volume that will, expected number of trips will be generated by the development in the morning will be about seven during the peak hour, 27 during the afternoon, and around 29 during the Saturday midday peak hour. Those numbers mean that, on average, will be a new car on the road every two minutes, which is not expected to have a significant impact on the roadway network. We run a capacity analysis of the intersections, a part of the study, and all the approaches that were studied, this driveway, this driveway, as well as this connection to Bank Avenue. In all those cases, the expected level service is B or A. E being A, the best level service you can expect, and F, the really poor level of service. With that said, the side is not expected to generate a significant amount of traffic, and also is not expected to have a significant impact on the existing roadway network. The other part of the study that we look into is also the number of parking spaces that are provided in the site. Using the ITE handbook on jet parking that will be needed for residential, as well as for commercial retail development. The numbers that will be required for a development like these are 32 parking spaces and the project, as it is proposed, is including 41 parking spaces. So there is a little bit of a buffer of parking, meaning that that development is not going to have an impact on the existing on-street parking. And as Walter mentioned, we have received the comments from the peer review, and we are working on providing responses to all of them, and we will be able to have that information for the board on the next board meeting. Thanks.
Great. Is that everybody on your side?
So that's it for our team.
Excellent. Well, let's take a moment, John and Jeff, if you want to provide just a summary of what you've seen so far and what you've submitted to them from a peer review perspective, that would be great. Let's go in order, John. Why don't you go first?
Okay, so John Chessia, Chessia Consulting Services. Just to sort of go over and I'm going to use the, use the plan a little bit, I guess. I think one of the issues that I had listed was they're expanding the width of this access here. If you, when you look at it in the field, which, you know, I've done, it's very steep on the side, there's a retaining wall here, and this side's actually eroding and not stable under current conditions, and it's going to be impacted, and that needs to be addressed as to how you do it. There's some trees in here. Work is pretty much right up against the property line. Is it feasible to do, you know, with the, with the grades they're proposing in that particular area? It's pretty steep, and they're trying to make it less steep, which is advisable because, you know, everybody that knows North Street, you come off and it goes up steep. So making it a little gentler would be better for access, but does it all fit, is one of the questions. This side's even steeper, and there's not much you can do there because there's other, you know, the Bank Avs. you know, the bank abs, you can't really modify. So this would, I assume this would be the main entrance because that would be the gentler slope and easier way to get in. There's a dumpster area here that doesn't really have much detail. How do you get at it? Is it going to be screened? What kind of dumpsters? Who uses them? Does everybody use them? Is it just for the retail? I think that's type of things that should be addressed. There's an excess of parking spaces and some of them, and Jeff may get into this too, but you've got some this, here they're running this way, here they're running this way, these are here. Some of these corner ones look a little bit questionable to me as far as people coming in, turning around. If there's an excess, maybe it would be better served to put some sort of an island in some of those areas to protect the spaces and you could landscape those islands to make it nicer, whatever. Maybe that would be on the landscape plan. It is proposed to parcel out a lot right here, which would have the existing building on it, and then a much larger lot that would be this building. I understand right now it's all in one ownership, but if it's two separate lots, which I don't believe unless they have, have they been A and R'd yet? I don't believe so. Someone could sell a lot. So you'd need to have appropriate easements for all of these things because it's shared access, it's shared, you know, these parking spaces back up into this lot. We have, you know, there's utilities that are interrelated, so there would be a lot of easement stuff to have these two lots like this. Plans only show a little bit of the information relative to the utilities. They show, you know, where water, sewer, and gas are coming up the road, but they don't show how they connect in the street to the building, what's existing here, how does that all connect? I think that there should be sort of a full utility plan that shows how everything works. Gravity lines in the street, which way do they flow? Drainage lines in the street, how do they connect? Where do they go? That's typical to show on it. Typically too, you also show maybe both sides of the street across and where any openings are for any other driveways or access. I know there's on-street parking and it's not really, it's just a strip here. There's not, sometimes on-street parking has designated spaces, but this is just a strip here and I believe there's spaces there on the other side too, crosswalk there. That's stuff that should be shown. I understand now after tonight that there is a landscape plan going to be shown, but the one wasn't one initially provided and that would be something that you would typically want and need to see. I think you might want to get a sense of how much earthwork is proposed. So the way the site is described, the way the site sort of works, it's relatively steep from here to North Street. There's a ridge right about here and then it slopes back down to the back. There's like a hole back here and it's proposed to sort of cut this down as discussed to make this at grade and this at grade for the, you know, the lowest level. So there's quite a bit of earthwork here. The plans don't really sort of indicate exactly how much because they cut off the existing contours where the proposed contours connect. I think you should leave all that so you can see it. And the same with the pavement, so you know what's added and what's not on the proposed plan, you can kind of compare. But there may be a need for an earthwork permit for this because not all of it's necessarily the foundation. So that's something that should be, I guess, looked into. I have a few issues with the drainage. I think as noted, the soils in the test pits were good. You could see the remnants of the test pit and it looks like it's pretty much all gravel in the back here and in here where you could see the holes. I guess there was one in this area that wasn't as good, but nothing's proposed there. But because you have a mix of new pavement and old pavement, and new pavement's got to be treated to certain levels, I think that the way they treat it might need to come up. There's a, there was a few other issues with that, but that's, I think, the biggest issue is treatment because I believe North Street drains to the harbor and even though it's prohibited, it is a shellfish growing area. So it's a higher, they're trying to make new places make up for some of the ills of the past. So the treatment level requirements are higher for new construction in areas tributary to a shellfish-growing area. So I think on the parking, I'm not exactly sure how these signs are proposed. So they have a 20-foot space with a stop, like a curb stop in there, and then a sign behind it, which looking at the plan, it looks like it might interfere with your length of overhang if there's a sign within the parking space. So you're supposed to have a 20-foot space with overhang, which is what's shown, but that'll have to be clarified because some of these may not quite have that. In the garage, the aisles only 20 feet versus the 24 feet required. So the plans, those parkings needs to be dealt with. There's a bunch of details which I'm sure isn't a big deal to add to the plan, but they weren't included in the first place. There's no lighting plan. I'm not sure what's proposed for lighting, but typically you get information on lighting. And as I said, some of the grades are pretty steep out there and I know they've tried to get them as level as they can in the parking spaces, but there is a requirement for no more than a 4% grade in the parking lot and that's not something that can be met throughout the parking lot the way, I mean, the access would not be part of that, but anywhere within the parking field and access aisles here and here would, you know, either need relief or would need to comply. So that's sort of the summary, unless you have any questions or on to Jeff.
Let's hear everything and then we'll go from there. That's all right. Thanks, Jeff, very much. Thank you, John.
I'm going to try to step back this way so that you can see the plan. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm principal with Vineson Associates and we're the town's traffic consultant on the project. So as you heard, we did submit a review letter, which the applicant is going through at this time to go through our comments. And I'll just kind of summarize some of the major points that we raised as a part of our review. We do agree with the applicant, it's, this project in and of itself is not a large generator of traffic. So most of our comments primarily focus on some of the issues that John had raised, really dealing with the access into the property and then onsite circulation. So there was some discussion about how access will be gained to this property, but there was one thing I think that was overlooked or wasn't pointed out that we did ask for some clarification on, and I'll get to that in a moment. So you heard the applicant talk about the amount of traffic the project is expected to generate and you heard him mention the retail portion of the project having different characteristics than the residential piece, which we agree with. One of the things with respect to the retail use, and you see where it's located on the plan here, it's in this location here, they've taken some credit for the fact that some traffic on North Street would come into the site and it is a trip on North Street that is out there for other purposes that's going to patronize the project just because they're driving by, which is known as a pass-by trip. Given where the site is generally located, the definition of a pass-by trip is the use really needs to be located adjacent to the roadway so that you can really see it and you say, I'm driving by, oh, I need to pick something up, so I want to swing in. That is not a characteristic of what we would expect for a use that's located significant distance from North Street is not really visible. So we expect that most of the traffic associated with that use is going to be a destination-type trip, being that it's going to be new traffic to the area and not necessarily draw from the traffic in North Street. Now that said, the way that the applicant generated the traffic for that use, it's a very small retail space. There's two ways to generate the traffic for that use. They chose the way that would result in an extraordinary amount of traffic. In fact, if you look at it, you really couldn't generate the amount of traffic that they're proposing for that use, given the size of the use. So we kind of weigh those two things and basically say, the numbers you heard about 30 peak hour trips is probably realistic. You're really, for 2,100 square feet with the 10 residential units on there, that's realistic to what we think it would generate. So we're going to negate the fact that they took credit for pass-by trips and just kind of discount that, but look at the fact that we think they've overestimated the amount of traffic the project's going to generate. So again, I think it's true to say that it's probably about 30 peak hour trips is what we're talking about. So it's not a large traffic generator. One additional trip every two minutes is not going to really cause an impact over existing conditions. Now that being said, again focusing in on the access into the project site itself. So you heard mention of Bank Avenue. Really from the standpoint of what it serves today, which is some residential uses, it's narrow, it's not even 20 feet wide. That's okay for the number of residential uses that are out there today, but as you start increasing the intensity of the use that's accessed from Bank Avenue, less than 20 feet is not something that's sufficient to accommodate two-way traffic. Now what raised some concern that we'd asked the applicant to look at is if you look at what's proposed in terms of the access into the property itself, what they were proposing is maintaining Bank Avenue and then actually adding what we'll call it a third lane of traffic there, there will be a one-way exit. So you really, from the standpoint of access, you can't have two-way traffic adjacent to a one-way exit there. Three lanes of moving traffic is just, it's just something is not a safe condition. So what we said is forget that. This really needs to be a two-way roadway, you know, one lane in, one lane out. It needs to be 20 feet wide, which is actually what's shown here. So that's fine. The concern comes, as John had mentioned, where we start then looking at the parking spaces that are here. So if this is a two-way roadway here, they are dependent upon having a portion of what will be the access into the property. Vehicles will actually be using that to back out of those spaces there. So that creates some conflicts in close proximity to North Street there. So we've suggested that to the extent that there's an excess in parking on the site, we really need to start looking at this area here and think about maybe eliminating some of those parking spaces or at a minimum, they need to be designated as employee parking so that they're not really going to be used that much in terms of parking maneuvers in that area there. So we've asked the applicant to look at that. Now as we continue around the site itself, and now we come to what as John has characterized as the primary access into the property, which is, that's how we figure that's going to function as well. One of the things that's not shown on the plan here is South Street. So you do see the crosswalk that's there, but what you see is that this driveway will clearly interact with South Street. So you heard the applicant talk about how they've gone through and done their traffic analysis and they mentioned the delays that will happen at intersections. Those delays translate into some queuing. Although the project itself is not going to produce a large volume of traffic, as we start to look at how this driveway will interact with South Street, it does start to create some conflicts that were not a part of the analysis that the applicant had submitted. So now we get back to the traffic studies. So what we said to the applicant is you really need to study this intersection as a four-way intersection consisting of North Street, South Street, and the access into this property. Do an analysis based on that. Their original analysis was showing some queuing would happen on the driveway here, but that did not account for what would happen at South Street. So now if I look at vehicles exiting this driveway, the vehicles coming up from South Street, the traffic on North Street, we need to understand how the queuing happens along the driveway here, how it might impact some of the parking within the site, and then again, the interaction with South Street and also the driveway that's right adjacent to this property. There's a driveway that's immediately adjacent. One of the things the applicant did not provide as a part of their analysis was a site distance analysis. And similar to what you had heard when we were discussing the project over at Station Street, there is a row of parking that exists in this area here. So what we need to understand is now, as we create this four-way intersection, a vehicle comes out of here, it needs to see traffic that's moving along North Street, it needs to see the vehicles that are on South Street, and the South Street vehicles need to be able to see them as well. That analysis for sightlines also needs to take into account the fact that there's on-street parking here. So as a vehicle is exiting, they need to be able to look through those, well, they need to be able to look, observe vehicles that are moving with vehicles that are parked along that side of North Street as well. So the applicant has to provide that information to us and to you to demonstrate that the access points here opposite South Street, the access point at Bank Avenue, that you've got sufficient lines of sight. And that takes us to the traffic counts. So again, we've asked that South Street be included in the analysis, so they'll need to do new traffic counts there. The other thing they need to do is collect traffic volume data on North Street and speed data, and that information needs to be provided for a minimum of 48 hours so that that speed data will allow us to be able to assess lines of sight at both access points into the property itself. So that's some of the homework that the applicant needs to go back and take a look at as a part of this subsequent submission that they'll make. The other thing is John, you had heard John talk about internal circulation within the project site. There's a lot going on in the site. The drive aisles are sufficiently wide on paper to be able to accommodate what you need for moving two-way traffic. But of course, what we need to see is the vehicle turning analysis so that they need to be able to show that a fire truck can maneuver through the site itself with vehicles parked in these spaces. The other things in terms of the functionality of both buildings is we need to be able to get moving vans in and out of the site. We also need to be able to service the dumpster area here and that all needs to take place in this property with vehicles parked in the parking spaces. We did ask the applicant to look at, as John had mentioned, the dumpster area that's here. We do agree, the applicant has a 20-foot or has provided a setback area here that would allow for, in the future, potentially for Bank Avenue to be widened to 20 feet, which is the minimum width required for fire department access. But what we did notice is we did ask the applicant to look at potentially relocating the dumpster because that dumpster area is within that 20-foot setback. So rather than having to, you know, redesign the site or relocate that dumpster to the, at any point when we want to widen Bank Avenue, we might as well just plan for that now to the extent that we're able to do that. The other thing is there's a utility pole right in the nose of this grassed area here. Ideally, the utility pole should be moved and those utilities placed underground at that location. We're not suggesting the applicant has to do that right now, but we would think that if they're planning for the potential for the future widening, we should be thinking about designing the building to accommodate that as well. And that would mean that taking these services and potentially looking at what would need to be modified on the building to accommodate the relook or removal of that pole or moving those utilities to another utility pole in that area there. So we've asked the applicant, we're not saying that they need to do that now, but they should at least come to provide some information to the board so you can understand what might need to change on the property to allow for that to happen. So again, they have our comments. We expect, as you heard, they'll be addressing those and it may result in some refinements of the site layout.
Yeah.
Happy to answer any questions you have now or later on.
Excellent. Thank you both. Let's spend a few moments on board questions and then open it up. I expect some of our guests are here to talk about this project. It is preliminary and likely to change, but want to make time for them. We're at about 45 minutes right now, so we have some time to do that. I will open it up to my colleagues.
So I guess I'll go first. So I have a lot of questions, but I'm going to only ask a couple tonight because I want to get to the abutters. But on Friday, I took some time, Friday afternoon, I walked up and down Bank Ave a couple times. Hadn't been up that street in a long time. And it kind of gave me a good feel for what's up there, the houses, the grass lot back there. And I do think, I know the applicant team is saying low impact, but I think it's going to have a significant impact. Going to have an impact on the folks who live on Bank Ave, Cottage Street, it's also going to have a pretty significant impact on the traffic on North Street. In my initial feel of the project, I'm glad you scaled it down from what it was. I thought initially it was just way too big, but I still, I do still feel like it's big. I mean, look at the massing of it from North Street all the way back. It goes back quite, quite, quite a ways back there. What's the height, Sammy? What's the height?
About 12 feet.
50 feet? I mean, that's significant. I mean, when, I mean, you were, you were, you were comparing the rooftop there to the abutment to the right and that abutment's up on a hill, pretty high up. And when, anytime you're comparing St. Paul's Steeple to a building downtown, it makes you a little nervous, to be quite honest, but. So I do have, I do feel like it's going to have pretty significant impact and it is big for that, for that area down there. You know, the traffic engineer talked about a couple accidents there. Close by, a child was hit crossing the street not long ago, down closer toward Hennessy's, but that happened. So it's, I'm going to be really interested in the sightlines. Jeff mentioned those. Sightlines on North Street are tricky. Vehicles exiting, the interplay with Bank Ave is going to be a little tricky. Those parked cars, you know, all day long, people trying to back in, back out, move along, heavy pedestrian traffic. The intersection that Jeff mentioned, farther down, you have people crossing that street. When you come up from South Street and you look left, pedestrians are often caught in the crossfire and people pull out quickly and boom, lo and behold, you've got, you know, a mother with a stroller and a dog crossing across the street. And it's, that dynamic is going to be really interesting to me to see how you, how you deal with that. Well, I've got, I've got a lot of other issues, but I'm going to, I'm going to yield there because I want to let my colleagues chime in. Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you. Yeah, so like Bill, you know, I really want to hear what the abutters have to say. And I don't have a lot to add, that we have great peer review engineers and, you know, I'm sure that everyone on this board agrees with all of their questions and all of their I'm sure that everyone on this board agrees with all of their questions and all of their issues. And so the next round will be where we get answers to those questions that we need to drill down on. I also, like Bill, I actually went out there this afternoon, and I was traipsing around, and I, like Bill, was struck by the scale of it. And I appreciate that it's been decreased over time. You know, we're just seeing the bigger proposal tonight for the first time, as you acknowledge. But, you know, it's still, I always put myself, you know, if I lived here on Bank Avenue, I didn't go so far as to go into the Cottage Street folks' yards, but, you know, you can see that it's a big impact on them. So then it causes me to think, okay, and I know you've acknowledged we haven't, you don't have a landscape plan yet, which is fine, but I'm very interested in understanding, you know, there's the beautiful tree that's right on North Street, there's a giant oak next to the North Street building. All the trees in the back, you marked a certain caliper, but, you know, what's the plan back there? Is this gonna be open green space, kids running around with a swing set, or is this gonna remain wooded and dense and lush the way it is? You know, I have a lot of questions in terms of if I live next door. And to that end, the topography is really interesting back here. And something we've talked about recently is wanting the topography on these plans to continue onto the abutters a little more than they usually do, and particularly here where it's clearly, you know, everyone's talking about how half of the lot drains down, you know, sort of towards Cottage Street, the back half. I'd like to know more about what's going on back here, because it looks like the low point is shared with, it looks like, the Olens' property. So I want to, you know, make sure we capture all of the topographical lines that we need to look at back here to make sure we're thinking about the drainage all around. I'm definitely interested in the lighting plan. I parked across the street on North Street today and up a little bit, and I was frankly shocked that the intersection with South Street hadn't originally been included, because that's pretty striking. I have the misfortune of going through the four-way stop sign at the bottom of Thaxton North Street many, many, many times a day. And, you know, I look at this and I think, oh, that's a big change to that spot. So I'm interested to see how, you know, that analysis comes out and how that impacts how we're looking at this. I also think, and this is not the job of our peer review engineers, but we're gonna need to have some conversations as a board about the amount of retail space that's been allotted here and sort of our downtown overlay district, and does this meet, you know, the intent, and, you know, what do we think of that? That's not something we'll get into tonight, but it's certainly something that we're gonna have to cover. I think that's all. I have a lot of questions, but like Bill said, I'd really like to hear what everyone else is gonna say. And my questions will change based on, you know, the responses that we get to our peer reviews.
Indeed. There is more information to come. Ted, do you have questions?
Just looking at the numbers for the parking, to me, it's not that clear yet, but, you know, parking and the movement of cars, the use of the off-site parking, that's, you know, I'm all ears at this point, so.
Yes, and I think a lot of our, some of our questions may get answered in the second round with the response to John and Jeff's reports. Any modifications that may come from the discussions with the Historic District Commission. So there are a range of issues. I echo what Jennifer said relative to the retail and the intent versus the letter of that. I think it's particularly important at this stage, and I'm not watching the clock so closely. If folks have comments, we're gonna hear them. We're not cutting anything off. But just rest assured that there is going to be more to come, and this is going to get clarified over time. But I think you've heard some of the, sort of, the fundamental questions that the board has and is looking forward to answers. But at this stage, let's open it up for guests, abutters, to speak. Again, if you'd go to the microphone and say your name and street address for us before you start your comments, that would be great.
My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a lawyer here in Hingham, and I represent the Beckers who live at 46 Cottage Street, excuse me, 46 Cottage Street, which is the property immediately to the east of the proposed project. If I have this correct, it's shown on the plan here, and I believe on this picture, their house is shown right here. My clients have reached out to me to assist them in understanding the permitting process. They understand that this is a valuable piece of real estate and very well may be developed. They've asked me to guide them through the process to make sure the project complies with the town's regulations and that there are no adverse impacts to their property. We recognize that this hearing is going to be a process and that there is information missing presently. Important to us, obviously, will be the landscaping plan and the photometric or lighting plan to understand the impacts to my clients. My clients are part of the neighborhood group that's headed up by Mr. Wheeler. I believe Mr. Wheeler has written a letter to the board, which addresses some of the technical aspects of the project. I also, this afternoon, wrote a general letter to the board as well as to the Zoning Board of Appeals to introduce myself, my clients, and their particular concerns, because they're going to be uniquely impacted by this project. And again, if I have the plans correctly, I believe the right side elevation is the elevation that will be facing their house. So they will be looking directly at that elevation, and the people within the project are going to be looking directly at my clients. They obviously have concerns regarding noise, light, and privacy because of the proximity of the project to their home. The major issue here is scale, and I think as several of the board members have expressed their opinion, the scale of the project is simply too large for the site and will have an adverse impact on my clients. In my materials, I provided you with a chart that described the neighboring residential properties and several of the commercial properties to give you a sense of scale. I believe that the largest residential building is the apartment building at 105 North Street, which has a footprint of 4,005 square feet and approximately 7,750 square feet of total living area. What's being proposed here is a multiple of that, approximately 28,000 square feet of residential. Mr. Wheeler addresses the issue of the quantity of commercial, and we also have that concern. Is 2,000 square feet of commercial sufficient to justify what's really a residential project within a business district? Does this serve the desire to encourage mixed use within the overlay district? And we did have concerns regarding the sequencing, but we learned this evening that in fact there is a hearing in front of Historic District Commission. I think it's critical, before this board issues any final decision, to understand the design and have a sign-off of Historic with respect to the design, because this very well may change in a meaningful fashion. And with that said, thank you very much for your time. I do have copies of the letter if you did not receive one in your package. And we did send a copy to Mr. Sullivan. Thank you.
Thank you. One second.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Brown, and this is really going to directly affect my life. We live on Bank Ave, that is our residence, and we own two commercial buildings directly across the street from the apartment building, which is the Snug and the Mortgage Company building. And we also own a building on South Street. So I'm pretty aware of the traffic situation that goes on here. In the morning, when I try to leave for work, it can take me up to five minutes sometimes just to approach, peek past the cars that are flying down North Street. They're not going 15 miles an hour, they're going almost 40 miles an hour. So this situation here and here and the corner of South Street are all extremely precarious, to say the least. And I just can't imagine adding all those cars. The commercial spot here, is it an ice cream store? Is it a coffee store? Is it a real estate office? It really makes a huge difference depending on what goes in there as to how many cars are going to be coming and going from this direction. And as a resident, I can't even imagine the scale of this, but that's what we're gonna be looking at, where we live. And it just doesn't seem, the size, the scale, the number of cars, the whole situation is just not a great idea, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Scott Reed. I live at 44 Cottage with my wife and three kids, which is adjacent to the Bank Avenue property on the east side lot line, all the way down to North Street. And, you know, it's critical, in our view, being direct abutters, that whatever is developed on this property truly be appropriate in scale and consistent with the surrounding area. And we have a high interest in what ultimately gets built here. It sounds like some of you have been to the Bank Avenue lot, and you will have noticed that it's a very quiet and secluded lot that's literally surrounded by 10 or 11 single-family houses, down Bank, up Cottage, and down this other side of the lot line where I live. And so it's, and by the way, many of those are historical homes, in fact, the majority of them are. And so it's hard for us to imagine how dropping a nearly 30,000-square-foot apartment building in the middle of that quiet setting wouldn't create material adverse impacts on us, the neighbors. Some of the specific concerns that we have are, as been mentioned by a few, is that just the size and scale of the property. You can just look at this elevation right here and see that it feels greatly out of character with some of the surrounding homes. This is nearly a 5,000-square-foot home, and it's dwarfed by the building. Safety, I can't count the number of young kids that live in some of those 10 or 11 homes around the property, and this is a very safe and quiet area, and we wouldn't want that to be compromised by 20 or so new folks coming in and out of the property at all hours a day, potentially. Noise, lighting, landscaping, congestion, go down the line, and we share some of the concerns that were raised about whether this project meets the spirit of the downtown overlay district, because the commercial area is going to be essentially hidden behind a multifamily dwelling, by the way, which is also dwarfed by the scale of the proposed project. And so, as has been noted, we've got a group of 17 families concerned abutters that have expressed and documented our issues in a letter to this board, to the zoning board, to the Historical Commission. And I'd encourage you all to read that carefully and consider it, because we moved to Hingham because of the preponderance of historical homes in New England charm, not for the preponderance of apartment buildings that are designed to maximize developer profits. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Faria, 18 Bank Avenue. My husband, Harry Wheeler, is the one that authored or co-authored the letter. We are both architects. We work with developers all the time. We appreciate that this is a very unique and special lot. We vehemently oppose this development, however, because of the scale and for so many reasons that have been eloquently stated. This diagram does a nice job of showing the height impacts, but the overall footprint, which was attached to the letter that was sent, really shows how big this building is compared with all of what's in the surrounding area. And it, just the footprint being the same as what Brute Awakenings is, is really inappropriate. Echoing your thoughts of all these residents, small residential buildings that go all around the site. This property that we're at has been in my family since my great-grandparents. We were lucky enough to participate in the development of the lot, these two lots, your lot. And it was very sensitive, went through all the boards, went through Historic, and they did a wonderful job of really meaning the scale and the context of the area. So we would appreciate if that process was similar and that this was reduced significantly. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Judy Sneath, 89 North Street. My concern is one that I have not heard, but Jeff touched on, which is the South Street intersection. My driveway is directly abutting the proposed two-way entrance on the east side of this property, and exiting that driveway every morning has been, is always a challenge. There are people who walk particularly to the post office on their commutes in the morning, and it's hard to see them because there's a bend in the road, and there are cars coming at you as you come out of that property. I also noticed that in order to get both an in and an out on that side of the property, the pavement goes to the end of the property and crosses into two trees that are there, pretty large shade trees. One is not on this property at all, but I see that it would be affected, and the other is partially on this property and on my property. And I have not had any conversations about the removal of those trees to allow for that driveway to go in. Thank you.
Other comments?
We're not a direct abutter.
Of course, yes.
Hello, I'm Patrick McNamara. My wife Rebecca is with me here. We are at 48 Cottage, so we back up to here. So again, as the comments have been made earlier, we've been together and discussed it. We think, you know, the size, the scale of all this is just not in line with the neighborhood, so I just want to make sure we had our comments right.
Yeah, that's great. If I implied that only direct abutters could speak, I didn't mean to do that. It's any citizen and resident that wishes to speak, we want to hear from. Thank you.
I'm Bill Olin. My wife Elaine and I live at 52 Cottage, which is just behind this project. I think they covered a lot of the stuff that we're concerned about, so I just wanted to come on record and say that, you know, we're opposed to the project. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I have two little things, if you don't mind. I'm sorry to come back in. I just want to say two more things. So I would like a site visit. It may be premature before we get the results of the responses to the peer reviews, but I think, having been out there today, I think it would be good for all of us to go out and have a site visit. I also, we haven't really talked about, and I would, we don't need to discuss it now, but I would like to know more about what improvements, if any, are being made to the existing building on North Street. I understand it's clearly in the submittal that it's remaining the same number of apartments, but to the extent that it impacts the construction plan, we need to know, I think, more about that plan and the aesthetics and all of the rest of it in terms of, is it meant to look like one big property? And we know sort of why the retail and commercial can't be incorporated actually on North Street in that building. I mean, that's sort of some of the information I'm looking for.
I would agree with the site visit. I think that's important. We get out there and helpful to me today. And procedurally, too, I just want to note, generally, this board would probably vote last. You know, generally, what will happen is the HTC will have, has a significant say in this process. The zoning board usually does their A2, and then we go last, generally, or we do it concurrently with the zoning board.
Yes, there was another project fairly recently where we deferred until, to the HTC, because we were not going to make any judgments until we knew what was going to be allowed by the HTC. I expect a similar process here as well. I would echo the site visit. I went up over the weekend, and having spent most of my life in Hingham, it was the first time I'd ever gone up Bank Avenue. And I grew up just a couple of blocks away. So it was eye-opening for me to see the, really how peaceful it is back there. And just, Sammy, just one quick question, if you would. Let's take the left side elevation, the upper left-hand quarter. Is that in the center of the building before it slopes back, is that what is currently the level lot, the level grass lot off of Bank Avenue? I'm just trying to get a scale of how far back it goes, because I couldn't quite figure that out myself.
This is the natural grade. So there's a 12-foot difference currently between the parking lot and the top of the slope, and then it slopes more gradually down.
Yeah, right. So I guess the site visit will be helpful, because...
Would help, yeah. And this is where it's, you know, that one-story elevation is in scale of Bank Street. And I can do more sightlines and show you, but... I can do more sightlines and show you, but, you know, to look at a footprint doesn't mean compatibility.
Understood. Were you going to do models, models, or not?
Was I?
Yes.
Is that a question?
Yeah, that's what...
I'll just talk to my client.
That was a genuine innocent question. Yeah, no, I'm not trying to spend your money, I'm not, I was just curious. All right, well, there's lots to be done responding to the peer review work. I know that you have informal with the HTC this week, and then formal in, when, Walter, October 18th? Did I have that right?
October 18th is formal, and then we have the ZBA tomorrow.
Right.
And I had talked to the town planner about a date for continuance, and we were thinking perhaps October 22nd, before this board will give us ample opportunity to respond to the towns' consultants and also to do a site visit. I don't know if the board wants to schedule that now, but we'd certainly welcome that opportunity.
While we're all here.
So, here's a couple of questions, just housekeeping. I think the board should tentatively schedule the site visit today, but I think that when we go out into the site, for the site walk, it would be helpful if you could put a stake into the ground where like the back of the building's going to be, or something for a frame of reference, so we're, have a little more of guidance for how things are going to be. I think that would be fabulous. Why don't we schedule the site visit? This board, you, when would you like to do it?
How much time, how much time will you need to do what Mary suggests?
So, maybe starting this weekend is the earliest, or so Saturday?
So, I have a con...
Weekends, if there's a better time during the week.
You've been through this with the other one?
Yes, yes.
How about the Saturday, how about the Saturday before the 22nd?
The Saturday, the 13th?
He said, well, the 13th or the 20th.
So, you have one already on the 20th, in theory.
In theory.
Well, we do...
At nine o'clock.
At nine o'clock.
I think we could, I mean, I would like to do this the same day.
Do I do them both the same day?
We've done it before, and we've been able to make...
So, my, my issue is that that morning I have, since I'm on CPC now, I have CPC site visits from 8:00 to 12:00 that morning. So, I was planning to peel away from CPC to go on the already scheduled one, but I don't know if I can miss, I mean...
So, when is your CPC stuff, the 13th and the 20th?
20th, 8:00 to 12:00 on the 20th and 8:00 to 12:00 on the 27th.
So, and, so, but hearing that, would this board want to trudge forward without Jen for this site visit, or, and I could walk at a separate time with her?
What, it suggested it? I don't know.
If it's staked out, I mean, I could go here separately.
That works, and if I can find a way to finagle CPC, like if I can go later or something, I'll figure that out.
I might have a CPC conflict now, too, that you mentioned, I'm involved with initiatives, so that might time me up that morning, but I don't know yet, so...
Well, we have two days of site visits, so I'm sure we could schedule you around.
Yeah, okay.
Speaking for the CPC.
I didn't know you were the chair. Congratulations.
Me neither.
All right, so I guess I'm hearing that we would tentatively schedule this for the 20th. You already have one scheduled at 9:00. We could schedule this one at 10:00.
Yes.
We could have perhaps an agreement that if your 9:00 o'clock one cancels, maybe this one shifts down to 9:00.
Sure.
I like that.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Is that okay? So, right now, it's tentatively scheduled for 10:00 AM on the 20th, and you'll have the certain things staked out for us in the field.
We'll take care of it, yeah.
Then, the other question is with regard to the continuance of the hearing to October 22nd. Is it your intention to provide responses to peer review comments in advance enough for them to review them?
That is our intention, yes.
Before the October 22nd, so that it will be a productive hearing?
They're working on them now.
And then, I would just, I would just want to advise the board and the applicant that there's already a couple of things on the agenda that night, so the board certainly continuing the hearing to that night, obviously, it's your decision, but you may run into a time crunch, you know, so just full disclosure.
Sure, I appreciate that.
These things have a way of shaking out, too, though, right?
Yes, they do. It'll work out.
Some things can roll off, so...
What an optimistic position. So, if the hearing, is our peer review engineer's available on the 22nd? So, if the hearing is to be continued to October 22nd, am I hearing the app...
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, 2-2.
22nd, yeah.
2-2. Then, am I hearing the applicant would be extending the decision deadline to plus 30, so November 22nd? So, if the board wants to consider that, we just need the applicant to sign this and the board to sign it and vote.
While we're doing that, Mr. Bruski, you have another...
Can you use the microphone?
Come to the microphone again, sorry.
Excuse me, I wanted to know whether the public would be welcome at the site visit.
It's a publicly notice meeting.
It's a public meeting.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
We have the permission of the applicant to go on the property.
We won't have the police there. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Just, just for the record, though, the board won't be deliberating, or debating, or taking public comment at the site visit?
Or questions, or...
Or questions. It will be for the board to have the plan and to really understand the site, so it won't be a back-and-forth dialogue, per se. Is that fair?
Yes.
All right, so we...
Thank you very much.
So, we have a request to continue the public hearings for the site plan review and the special permit to the meeting of October 22nd, 2018, and to further extend the decision deadlines for both to November 22nd, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John. Thanks, Jeff.
You should just come to every meeting.
I should.
Yeah, gradually.
Why don't you come over there?
All right. Very good.
Right now, well...
After you announce to the next one, you want me to make a motion?
That'd be great.
Let it settle down. I'm not going to be here. Thank you. I'll be the next one.
It's an alpasso.
Mics are on, gentlemen. Yes, right. Yes, right, which we will do now. I was just letting it quiet down just a little bit. So, we have a request to, from WSM Hingham Properties LLC, to continue the public hearings to October 1st and extend the decision deadlines to November 1st, 2018.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Busy next week.
Judy can join us.
You are welcome to join us. So, next on our agenda is a definitive subdivision approval for 170 Gardner Street. I believe Mr. Morris is here. He's provided additional materials already. We have had one discussion on this already with some comments that I believe, Greg, you've incorporated. Why don't you let us know where we stand now with the modifications that have been made?
Yep, for the record, I am Gregory Morris, Registered Engineer, Morris Engineering, representing the applicant tonight for the two-lot subdivision at 170 Gardner Street. I presented the plan to you last time to familiarize you with the project. It's coming in with a new cul-de-sac access, one new house lot in the back. There's an existing house at 170 Gardner that would remain out in front on the front lot. As a result of the last public hearing and the comments that were expressed from your review consultant, BL Companies, we made a couple of plan changes, and we submitted revised plans back in early August. The changes that we had made, we slid the cul-de-sac location in the roadway over approximately five feet to get it further from the abutters' lot lines and to preserve some trees that existed along the eastern lot line. There's a stand of trees that we're able to preserve now in that location. We performed a cut-and-fill analysis. We performed a fire department turning template analysis on the Hammerhead roadway. We also proposed the cul-de-sac. Originally, it was a full-size cul-de-sac. What we did is we are requesting a waiver to construct the Hammerhead turnaround. It sounded like that was, you know, that was input from the last meeting to go the Hammerhead route. In addition, the actual roadway layout itself, at the request of the fire department, we changed the nine-foot travel lanes to 10-foot wide travel lanes. And the Cape Cod berm, we had originally specified 18-inch-wide Cape Cod berms, we're asking for a waiver down to 12-inch-wide Cape Cod berms. Those were the revisions that we made to the subdivision. Since the last meeting, we went back to the Board of Health. There should be in your file a favorable recommendation from the Board of Health, and you'll, I believe, also see a favorable recommendation that we've updated the drainage accordingly and the plans accordingly for BL Company's outstanding comments. That's where we stand.
And the waivers are that you're requesting?
So, we had three waivers listed on the cover sheet. There's potentially a fourth waiver that I want to talk to you about when we go through them.
Yep, that's my account as well, so... All right, I will open it up to the board for comments before taking some other comments and then advancing the discussion. Anyone have questions?
Well, I would like to go through the waivers again.
Yeah.
You would?
Yeah.
Just start with it.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yes, of course.
Can you walk us through the waivers, Greg?
So, the three waivers that are listed on the plan, the first waiver is Section 4B-4B of your regulations. Dead-end streets shall have a turnaround at the end of them, the full-size cul-de-sac. We're requesting the Hammerhead-style turnaround, not the full-size paved with the landscaped island in the middle. This would be, as depicted on our grading sheet here, just a traditional Hammerhead turnaround style, okay? The second waiver was with respect to the Table 1, as well as Section 4B-3A, which talks about the edge treatments on the road, at the edge of the road. There's supposed to be an 18-inch-wide Cape Cod berm. That's an asphalt berm that's poured with the street. We've requested a waiver down to a 12-inch berm. It allows you a little bit less impervious area and a little bit easier to construct. The third waiver is again from Section 4B-3A and the Table 1, which is your roadway cross-section, is the width of the traveled way. Each travel lane in your regulations is supposed to be nine feet in width. The fire department has requested 10 feet in width, so what we've proposed is 10 feet wide at the request of the fire department. You end up with a wider roadway than what your regulations call for. And then, the fourth one that is not listed on the cover page, and I, I wasn't certain if it was technically a waiver or not, would be from Section 5B-4, which is regarding street trees. You'll see on the grading and layout sheet that what I've proposed, I've highlighted here in pink are street trees. The street trees are placed 50 feet on center, coming around, but on the western, sorry, the eastern side of the subdivision, this area in green is the proposed limit of work that would remain as undisturbed tree area. The trees that are out there, there's significant pine trees in that area that would remain. In Section B-4, it says that "street trees shall be planted in a subdivision wherever, in the opinion of the planning board, existing woodlands or individual trees are not retained." So, I'm not proposing to plant trees here, because we'd literally be cutting down trees to plant new trees. I wasn't certain if a waiver was specifically required of that section or not, so I didn't include it. It sounds like that's your opinion that's necessary.
I believe that's right.
And the area that you're talking about in green there, this is a tree preservation area that would be reflected in the deed and on the plans and indicated as such?
Yes, so we could include that, a condition that this be a tree preservation area, and we could mark that out in the field. That would be a limit of work. We could also add an additional tree preservation area, which I will highlight on the plans here, if the board is so inclined. Where this is a, where this is a Hammerhead turnaround, you gain some extra area in here that typically would have been cleared if you constructed the full-size cul-de-sac. We could certainly add that additional area as tree turnaround, so that could be incorporated into a recordable plan, if you'd like.
Okay, and then, does the tree preservation area extend? It sort of just ends down there. Is that indicative of the tree preservation area stopping where your green stops? Or does it continue? Or is that not part of it at all?
That, that's the edge of the limit of clearing that I'm showing on the lot. I didn't shade around the back side of it, so, but I mean, if you wanted to extend it down this side lot line, you could, you could extend it on that lot, say, a minimum width of, say, at least 10 feet down that entire west, eastern side lot line, and we could comply with that.
Well, we had originally, right, talked about buffers for the neighbors on all sides, so that seems to me that that would be consistent with what we've talked about before. Then, the question comes to not only marking it on the plan, but how we make that clear on the ground. I don't know if this is something you have already covered, Mary, but...
So, typically, what we'll do is inspect the limits of clearing before the work starts. And so, one of the proposed conditions that the board has and the applicant has seen, Condition B-2, prior to the commencement of construction, limits of clearing, as depicted on the plan, shall be clearly marked in the field with the installation of a staked mulch log, silt fence, or orange construction fence, and shall be inspected by the planner and/or peer review engineer prior to the start of work. That's something we do on all projects now, so essentially, before shovels in the ground, we walk the site and check it. Does that address your concern?
Well, on many sites, we have gone, taken the next step, where proactively looking into the future, we require that, you know, as soon as the person comes in and lives here and wants to put in a pool and, you know, I don't know, a tennis court or whatever, you know, we, that we have made it clear in the deeds, but also on the ground, with, we've done all kinds of different things, from wooden signs to boulders, to this and that.
Yeah, we did it up on Main Street.
So, we've done boulders. The most recent one we did, we did concrete bounds, six to eight feet apart, and of course, the plan has made part of the Homeowners Association covenant. So, I guess what I'm hearing the board ask is, is there a recommendation for some physical marker in the field that would visually depict the no-disturb limit?
Sure, so if we were, you know, so we'll have, we'll have the recordable plan depicting that limit, but physically out there in the field, we could do concrete boundary markers along that. We could do, typically in other towns, we've also done like four-by-four wooden posts that stick up along the edge of the wood line that say, you know, no disturbance zone beyond that. We could do placed boulders. You could do a split-rail fence. Those are all things that I've seen incorporated onto plans, so...
I'm open to, you know, what the...
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like the concrete bounds, but I like the small little signs. signs.
Or the boulders, I like too.
The boulders. I mean, just something just to mark the area so that someone doesn't get confused and take a tree down that shouldn't be taken down.
So boulders don't rot.
This is true.
It's true.
So...
And landscapers can't go over them.
And they can't go over.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So if you're amenable to that, I mean, I think, how far apart have we wanted them in the past?
So in the past, the board has said, you know, six to eight feet apart, but if they're rocks, eight feet apart, or the board could say ten, it's, you know, this is not such an extensive subdivision like you've done in other ones. And it's a pretty straight line. Would the board be satisfied with ten feet apart?
Yeah.
Yes.
We can make that a condition, yeah.
Yeah.
I think on the waivers, you know, we have granted the Hammerhead. I'm comfortable with going from eighteen to twelve on the berm. I'm glad that you're exceeding the travel way. And I think Jennifer's suggestion on the preservation area is a good one.
I know we had abutters here that were very concerned about the impact, you know, to their homes, so.
Shall we move to there, the public comment? If anyone has comments, please, as you may not have been here earlier, we're being recorded by H-Cam, so if you do have a comment, please come to the microphone, state your name and street address, please.
Thank you, Scott Golding from Drontatio Morgan. I represent Dennis and Tanya Cleary, Three Gardner Terrace. I'd just like to say I support the idea of the tree preservation area. I think it's a good idea. I think the boulders, ten feet apart, that's a good idea as well, so. I know the Clearys were very concerned about that. I think it addresses it well. And I like the change to the Hammerhead. I think that's a positive change to the plan as well. One potential condition on endorsement, I know the plan showed the lot area, and I'd note that there's a couple tails. The definition of lot area within the bylaw is different than the total lot area, so I'm not sure if there could be a note on the plan that kind of reflects the lot area, you know, compliant with the definition in Section 6 of the bylaw, which is the definition section, so. But otherwise, I think the board's given this a very thorough review, and we certainly appreciate that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Keith Crawford, One Gardner Terrace. I think the only thing I'd point out, it all looks good on paper, but if you actually walk the property, it's quite close. And had I known that this was going to be proposed, I wouldn't have put my pool as close to the property where it is it's situated. I probably would have been closer to my dwelling. So I've got now, I pay quite a bit of taxes in Hingham, and I've got roads on three sides of my property. So if you look at it and you do a comparative, it's probably not comparative with a house of that value around Hingham. So if you walk the property where the house is and where the pool is on the other property, it looks great on paper, but if you walk the property, it's quite tight. And there's a, there's a degree of pitch that's happening throughout there, so it's going to be a very delicate situation for whoever buys the property to fill it in appropriately and not have it slide off into the property and kill the trees that are on the side there. It's not a flat, it's not a flat property. There's a lot of work that's got to be done. There's a lot of fill that has to be done, and it's very tight. Looks good on paper, but if you walk the property, you would probably have to go back and look back at it quite a few times to understand how it's actually done.
All right, moving on. Do you need to read the conditions, Mary?
Yes, would you like me to help you with that, or do you want to?
Are there any volunteers?
I can do that.
I will delegate, delegate accordingly, though.
Okay, so I'm going to walk through the waivers and the findings. Is that what, or the...
Did I pass down the proposed conditions?
Oh, I'm on the wrong page.
I did make an edit to the proposed conditions, just based on the discussion. To number C, it's, number C says to show the tree preservation area, and I noted, "and extend the tree preservation area along the eastern boundary line not less than ten feet in width, and show boulders ten feet on center along the preservation area after the Hammerhead."
Okay. So the proposed conditions for the 170 Gardner Street definitive subdivision, A, prior to the endorsement of the subdivision plan, 1, the applicant shall submit to the planning board for review and approval, a new set of plans revised as follows, A, to show the complete list of waivers, B, to list the date of the COA in the note on the cover sheet, C, to show the tree preservation areas, as Mary just read into the record, D, to update the lot area calculation in accordance with the lot shape provisions in the regulations, 2, a covenant to be executed and made a part hereof and recorded with the subdivision plan in the Plymouth Registry of Deeds or other performance guarantee in an amount sufficient to the planning board to secure performance of the construction of ways and the installation of municipal services required for the lots shown on the subdivision plan shall be provided pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81U. B, prior to the commencement of construction, 1, the roadway, drainage facilities, and other utilities within the subdivision shall remain private and shall not be accepted nor maintained by the town of Hingham. Maintenance, repair, and improvement thereof shall be the responsibility of the applicant and/or the owners of the lots within the subdivision. The tree preservation areas must remain in perpetuity as shown, with the exception of routine maintenance. Such obligations shall be set forth in a Declaration of Easements, Restrictions, and Covenants running with the land, a final version of which shall be approved by the planning board prior to endorsement of the plan and to be recorded with the plan. The declaration should include an exhibit depicting the tree preservation areas and the project or, and the project or reference the recorded subdivision plans. 2, limits of clearing as depicted on the subdivision plan shall be clearly marked in the field with the installation of a staked mulch log, silt fence, or orange construction fence, and shall be inspected by the planner and/or the peer review engineer prior to the start of work. 3, no work on the subdivision shall commence without an approved stormwater pollution protection plan in place, known as a SW PPP, a SWIP. The SWIP must be submitted to the planning board and the planning board's peer review engineer for review a minimum of one month prior to the start of construction. The SWIP must be phased consistent with any proposed phasing of the project and shall identify the detailed erosion and sedimentation controls to be utilized during the different phases of the work. 4, prior to the start of construction or site clearing, there shall be a pre-construction meeting attended by the applicant team, the town planner, and/or the peer review engineer for the planning board to review the installation of the erosion control measures, the SWIP, the project timeline, and the schedule for police details if needed. 5, the applicant will bear the responsibility to see that any inconsistencies with the plan and decisions of other state or local agencies or boards are resolved before construction begins. C, conditions during destruction, construction, not destruction. 1, police detail shall be required at the discretion of the chief of police to assist in managing construction traffic entering or exiting the subdivision. 2, the bounds along the outside boundaries of the subdivision must be set and surveyed at the start of the active construction. 3, prior to paving, the applicant must submit to the planning board's peer review engineer and the town planner an interim as-built plan showing all set bounds, utility, and drainage installation, and spot grades sufficient in the peer review engineer's reasonable determination to demonstrate conformance with the approved subdivision plan. The paving may not begin without the written authorization of the town planner. 4, the applicant shall coordinate inspections with the peer review engineer consistent with the subdivision regulations and provide construction schedule updates to the planning board and peer review engineer weekly via email. D, general conditions. 1, all work shall be performed in accordance with the subdivision plan, this certificate of action, and except as specifically waived herein in conformity with the rules and regulations of the Hingham Planning Board in effect as of the date of the application. The applicant shall complete all work shown on the subdivision plan, including all ways, drainage facilities, and utilities, within two years of the date of endorsement of the subdivision plan, or this approval of the subdivision plan shall be null and void unless, at the request of the applicant, the planning board extends the time for performance of such work. 3, each deed for any lot or lots within the project shall specifically set forth that the conveyance of such lot or lots is subject to the certificate of action and the declaration. 4, street trees must be planted prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy for any lot shown on the subdivision plan. 5, approval by the planning board of this plan shall not be treated as nor deemed to be approval by the Board of Health for a permit for the construction and use on any lot of an individual septic system. No building or structure shall be placed on any lot without septic system approval by the Board of Health.
That's you done.
Thank you.
Take the blow. So those are all of the conditions with modifications. Should I just read through the waivers and the findings?
Yes, and then the board should vote individually.
And then you want to vote on them individually?
I would recommend that.
So, the first waiver, number one, section, it's a waiver from Section 4.B-4B, the request to allow the Hammerhead instead of the cul-de-sac. The findings are, the design reduces the impervious cover, which benefits the community. The planning board requested that the applicant consider a Hammerhead instead of a cul-de-sac. A Hammerhead is sufficient for public safety purposes, and that this waiver is not inconsistent with the subdivision control law and provides a public benefit for this specific project as designed. Have a motion to approve that waiver?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waiver number two is for Section 4.B-3A, Table 1, the request to allow the twelve-inch Cape Cod berms in place of the eighteen-inch Cape Cod berms. This also helps, the findings are that this helps reduce the impervious cover, and that this has been granted by the board routinely, and that the regulations have now been changed to permit twelve-inch Cape Cod berms, so granting the waiver would be aligned with the updated requirements in the rules and regulations, and that this waiver is not inconsistent with the subdivision control law and provides a public benefit for this specific project as designed. Can I get a motion on waiver number two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waiver number three, which is for Section 4.B-3A, Table 1, the request to allow a twenty-foot-wide travel way where eighteen feet is required. The findings are that the fire department has required a twenty-foot paved road, that the regulations have now been revised to require this width of paved roads, so approving this request would be consistent with the board's requirements, and that this waiver is not inconsistent with the subdivision control law and provides a public benefit for this specific project as designed. Can I get a motion on waiver number three?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Waiver number four, Section 5.B-4, to allow a partial waiver for the installation of street trees along the eastern side of the right-of-way. The findings are that the board requested the preservation of trees along the eastern side of the right-of-way, and clearing would be required, and clearing those would be required to install the street trees, and that this waiver is not inconsistent with subdivision control law and provides a public benefit for this specific project as designed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then, I will make a motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan of Land Redtail Lane, Hingham, Massachusetts, prepared by Morse Engineering Company, 19 Union Street, PO Box 92, Situate, Mass., O2066, prepared for Joseph R. Kennedy, 3 Fox Runway, Hingham, Mass., O2043, dated July 2017, revised to August 2018. Seven sheets as amended, with the waivers of the subdivision rules and regulations approved herewith and incorporated herein by reference, and subject to and on the conditions as discussed, which if not complied with, shall, at the option of the planning board, operate as a rescission of this approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're off.
Before you guys take home packets, I can start out without his, but I've got my eyes on it.
Grizzled veteran, Ellen, finding his way.
I got my eyes on it. How are you? Good, you all sound so fresh. Well, that's good to hear. Oh, and I have something to pass down. Good, how are you?
Excellent.
Welcome.
Thank you. Two. You want one back, Mary? There's an extra? Or are you good? The condition?
I just handed the board the, another copy of the August 6 submittal.
Thank you.
And the proposed, the thing you sent today.
Oh, yeah.
What, the conditions that you sent?
Which they had received previously.
Yes.
But I'm just handing them a hard copy.
Yes.
They've got it all memorized.
So the next item is 9 Short Street, the site plan modification. Welcome, Jeff, why don't I just toss it to you?
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Jeff Toccio, and I represent Eli's Auto Repair over at 9 Short Street. Eli Yazbeck, the owner is here, Scott Golding from my office is here as well. We're here this evening on something a little unusual. What had happened is, we recently, sometime earlier this year, received permission to add on seventy-nine square feet of a freezer to the south side of the gas station and retail convenience over at 9 Short Street. As part of doing that, the retail on the inside got expanded, again, interior slightly, and then what had happened is that allowed for him to retrofit the bathrooms to put in a single handicap bathroom. That resulted in a reduction in the parking spaces from nine down to eight, which is all compliant, very compliant, to allow him to actually go forward with the freezer with an idea that he's then going to be able to have a dedicated person at the counter instead of having either himself or the person who's the gasoline attendant running around watching the cash register. We had filed in February with the selectmen looking for beer and wine, which was then subsequently put on, I want to say, maybe July, but, you know, several weeks ago. And one of the questions came up, which was, there seem to be a lot of cars there. Whenever I go by and I look there, the place is cars from, you know, one side of the building over to the other side of the building. And as a customer, you know, they're right, there are a lot. So we were asked, what's the explanation? Is that something that's going to change when you do this expansion? Is there a plan? What's happening over there? You folks had approved the site plan review some time ago. We went through all the parking tables. One thing that I didn't mention is that this is business District A, which allows for a 25% reduction in the parking over and above just what the standard numbers would be. So on its face, technically, there's, you know, there is quite an abundance of parking, and that has to do with the availability of all the other parking that's there in the district. Many of the other businesses there just simply don't really have onsite parking, but it's, you know, it goes, whether it's School Street, whether it's Main Street, you know, there's a mix of uses of the parking. So with that, we left there charged with coming up with a plan that actually shows what's going to happen going forward, what our expectations will be, what the plan will be in order to keep, keep the cars, you know, moving, keep parking spaces open. And if you've gone by recently, in, you know, since about that time, you'll notice that there's... be in order to keep the cars, you know, moving, keep parking spaces open. And if you've gone by recently, you know, since about that time, you'll notice that there's a substantial drop in the number of cars there. And that has to do with, just operationally, the way that Eli is now looking at it and just the change in his perspective on how he runs the entire business in the site. What has happened in the past is that the inspection, the repairs, that was always the focus with the gas pumping. And what would happen is he became very lax on allowing people to come pick their car up, you know, this weekend or at different times. Sometimes people would go on vacation and say, can you fix my car? Can you keep it there until I come back? And Eli would say, sure, because there really wasn't a competition for any cars other than his need to be able to park cars typically for the repairs. He's, you know, he's now toeing the line, and, you know, that doesn't occur anymore. What he does is he's actually going and picking up and dropping off the cars for the clients. So he's really, that was something he did sporadically before, now it's something he's really dedicated himself to doing. The reason on this is, and the thinking behind it, is that right now, about 80% of the retail sales for what they are, whether it's, you know, Mountain Dew and bubble gum and things like that, are just by people who pull up, they're getting a fill-up, and because there's a gas attendant, they don't have to stay out there with the pump, and people will wander in and buy something. Going forward, the thought is that certainly that's going to be, you know, where most of the people come in, but that there's going to be a shift, whether it's, you know, people who say, I want to go for, get a bottle of wine or get some beer, that's going to be someone who's, you know, whether they're at Dependable, somewhere else, you know, running an errand. And that's the thinking behind it. His expectation, it's only a 79-square-foot cooler, that, you know, it's going to be something that's going to be enough revenue to allow him to justify having an employee who's going to sit there, watch the cash register, and, you know, that's going to be something that, whether it pays for itself, whether it's, you know, profitable or whatnot, he sees it as convenience, as an amenity, that furthers his investment in the property. He'll remember that he put the canopy in there, which now keeps everyone out of the rain, et cetera. And that's been a really, a nice feature, that, you know, the feedback's been very positive. This is a continuation of where he wants to push what's happening here. What we're doing is, we went through, we asked him, we sat down, went through when his peak hours are, and what we determined was that the peak hours for gasoline, for example, which I can run in, like 8:30 in the morning to 10:30 in the morning, or, you know, kind of the AM when the gasoline fill-ups are happening, and then in the afternoon it's 2:30 to 4 o'clock, that's, you know, when the people are coming in for the gasoline, and that winds up being some spikes, and, you know, when the cars are actually moving in and out in front of the pumps, that, you know, those are not really coincident with when he's thinking that, you know, that someone coming in for beer and wine would actually come in. Typically, those would be, you know, in the evening, you know, 5 o'clock on. So that was one thing that we noted. The other has to do with the hours of the repairs, which are 8 to 5 o'clock on weekdays, and then 8 to 2 on Saturdays. So after 2 o'clock on Saturday, you know, that's it for the rest of Saturday, that's it for Sunday. What that winds up doing is, you know, it kind of opens up, if you take a look at it, when he anticipates that folks, you know, if there is added traffic for, you know, beer and wine over and above, just the people coming and getting gas, that it's going to be something that kind of spikes up after those times that they already have the 80% right now, the people that are going to the convenience store. When we run through, excuse me one second. We ran through, and I gave a little bit of an analysis of what spaces are available in the Hingham Center, you know, just for, we started in on it, and, you know, they're there. Do I think that they're going to be needed for this? No, I don't. I think that he's shown already that he's able to keep the spaces clear. Do we think that there's going to be, you know, people saying, let's all drive to Eli's and go buy beer and wine and park there? I really don't. I think what you're going to do is you're going to continue to see the people that go there for gasoline and then realize, hey, I can stop in and get something here instead of going, you know, up the street and making a special trip. So to that extent, I think that there's going to be plenty of the parking. Again, there's four on the south side of the building, four spaces on the north side of the building, and then if you take a look at it, you've got four spaces at the pump apron to actually be able to park the cars. It's not that those are counted or that we did count them, but it just shows that for a small site, you know, this property actually has parking, which is not necessarily the norm in this Business A district. What we've done is we've given you folks a parking plan, which goes through it with some more detail. And this is all developed, not something that I just put together, or not something that Eli just put together, but something that we sat down, and we talked about current trends, how everything works, what we expect in the future, and we came up with a site management plan that he is confident that he can abide by, it works with what his needs are, and I think that it is going to show that it's going to result in a nice, you know, nice flow on the site from the perspective of, you know, not having increases as a result of the beer and wine change. And then also, I think more importantly, is just his managing the site and not allowing people to keep their cars there for extended periods of time. Once they're repaired, they're to move off of the site. What we've done is, we put this together, and we've asked, as part of the site plan review, which was previously approved, recorded, that there'd be a modification to that, which specifically references the site management plan, and then has a one-year look back. We modeled the, you know, just the language on the one-year look back after many others that we've done, so that we actually come in, and then, you know, we can discuss if there are problems, complaints, et cetera, so that if there are further changes to be made, you know, that that's something that can happen. Of course, in the interim, if something goes, you know, awry, there are problems, we would expect that, you know, that somebody would say something before having to, or wait for the look back. But I think based on our discussions and what we've seen out there, and I'm talking, you know, it's been about, I want to say, six weeks of driving by at different times, people have said it to me, because I talk to other people about the issue, get feedback. People say, you know, geez, it looks a lot different over there when you go by. So with that, I also have a site plan that I put on a board, but I think everyone knows the site pretty well. But I can answer any questions using that, or, we're here to respond to whatever questions you have or comments.
I do have copies of the site plan here, too. If the Board would like it, we can pass it down.
Yeah. It's always helpful to look at.
And if I can, what I did was, I had a larger one made up, and I took off all the survey extraneous information.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
I just handed them the previous submittal, basically.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
So, Board questions?
Yeah, so, I'm not, from this Board's purview, I'm not so much concerned as to, you know, the beer and liquor issue, that's really not us. What is concerning to me is, and you brought it out in your presentation, is that, you know, you drive by the site and you see vehicles kind of dispersed all over, kind of all over the place. I mean, I'm not sure if it was you or not, but I remember, I've heard about vehicles being parked on Leavitt Street, behind the old dentist office, that could, may or may not be being repaired. I don't know about that, but you do see a lot of vehicles kind of all over the place there. And now you're going to encumber the site more by taking 80 feet away, and which is going to make it more difficult. Again, I don't care why you're doing it, the purpose of it, it just, for me, it's going to make an active site a little more cumbersome, you know? And I think, you know, I would, I think Mr. Tocchio's idea of this is a good idea. I would like to see a little more detail as to how you move cars in and out. I mean, so I like the fact that you have hours of operation here, and that's a good thing, but when you drive by there, you do see a lot, like, a lot of cars kind of parked on the side, and it does give me a little pause to think that, hey, now we're going to reduce the site by 80 feet. That's already pretty active and busy. And it's wonderful for you, you've got a great business going there, and that's, we like to see that. But I would like to see just a little more order to how the vehicles move in and out. And this does give some good perspective on it, but that's just my initial thoughts.
So, I would agree with that. I guess I, the use is relevant, I think, to me, and again, it's not our purview, but there is some reason that you're choosing to sell beer and not Mountain Dew, right? That if...
Both. Both.
Fair, okay, but...
Beer and root beer.
Right. Thank you. That if, in fact, you're selling largely the same amount for the people that are pulling up and having their gas pumped, it's not a, quote, destination stop, right? They're just going in to buy beer instead of Mountain Dew at that time, then I don't necessarily understand the business distinction, right? And it's perfectly reasonable, right, that you're going to think more people are going to come and shop for beer and wine than are for Mountain Dew. Fair. But that means that the activity on that site's going to be different, right? These are not people that are just parking at the pump and walking in. These are people that are going to be coming, going, and going from those spaces, which, as we see now, are largely filled up with the cars that you're servicing. It's a good business, right? So, the use is relevant to me only relative to the activity it's going to generate. And I will say that we don't have a lot of frame of reference. This use doesn't exist in a gas station in Hingham. Candidly, when I heard, I didn't think it was allowed in Hingham. So, that was obviously news to me. So, we don't have a lot of, at least local, Hingham history on what that use would be. So, that's my question, is relative to, there's going to be, there must be some expectation of increase in demand on visitation. It's not purely people buying gas.
Yeah, absolutely. There's going to be something, somebody's going to know and is going to say, I'm going to go there, whether it's going to be a neighbor who's going to walk up, whether it's somebody who's just going to say, I'm not going to go up, you know, the street to the Cracker Barrel or, you know, the Main Street Deli, I'm, this is closer, I'm going to stop here. There's going to be some amount. You know, it's going to be limited, it's going to be 79 square feet, which is, I mean, smaller than this little area where you folks are. So the thinking is, it's going to be limited offerings. And I ask some of the questions, and it's something we talk about, it's like, is this going to be a moneymaker for you? Does this compete against the repairs, et cetera? And, you know, the response is, it's, you know, it's convenience, it's, you know, the people come in, some more will come in, but it's still going to be the majority expectation is, you know, somebody's going to say, I'm going to get some gas, and then I can run in. And again, his justification is trying to get it to the point, right now, the convenience on the inside isn't at a point where it would justify that person who actually works behind the counter. And then the other piece of the equation is that modern pumps, instead of the older ones, have more like digital, internal, in-building type space requirements, so that somebody can actually be near, you know, the cash register and some of the equipment in there as well. So, that's his take on it, in the way that this is going to come forward. That's, right, I see it the same way, exactly the same way that you see it, and Billy, I totally understand your questions. The important piece of this has to do with how busy are the two garage bays? One garage bay, the one that was lengthened, he had to lengthen it so that it's long enough to do the state inspections. That's only used for the state inspections. He's, you know, his, I think his peak is 200 per month, which is about half of what other places do, so it's an itch, it's, you know, it's me rushing there on the last day of the month, right?
Or me, full disclosure, I think, so...
But that's all that that's used for. So it's running out of one, basically one bay, two to three cars per day. And again, the emphasis is not on, sure, it's here, come and pick it up whenever you want. So, he's able to manage that one bay. I think that he's shown, he's shown it in the last, since this became an issue, it's been really big, and he's going to have to, he's going to have, he's going to have to do it, because if he doesn't, right, one set of eyes, two, me, we're all going to be driving by saying, Eli, what's, you know, it's going to be something which is going to be, it's going to be policed.
I think that's the diligence, it's kind of, right, going back to what Bill said, right? So, you know, if you're busy, and the cars you're servicing are in all those spaces, and it's something, you know, and somebody pulls in, not for gas but for beer, where do they go? What does that create, right? You start congesting the space pretty quickly, and given the history of, again, the success of your business, I would guess, again, and I'm often reminded not to question business models, that's not my job, so, but that you've had this volume of cars, right? So, there isn't an obvious excess space for those sort of destination buyers. So I think that's where kind of my question and Bill's question match up, so, do you have...
Well, I just, I look at this like there are a number of conundrums that we face, frankly, because he actually has an excess of parking, according to our bylaw. And we hear anecdotal evidence, and, you know, people have seen that there seem to be a lot of the repair cars parked in parking spaces, but it's not as though we have an enforcement action, it's not as though we have, you know, lots of, you know, an audience full of people complaining, at least yet, and we don't have a record, you know, to rely on to say, well, he's done this, and no one, we don't have that before us. So, another conundrum is that I think each of us sitting here feels like adding alcohol, which is not our purview, but adding that to the retail will clearly generate more use, but our zoning bylaw doesn't really give us an opportunity to address that, which is maybe a weakness in our zoning bylaw, but it is what it is. So I'm just saying, it's just yet another conundrum, right, that we face when we're looking at this. So, when I look at it, I don't see that we have a lot of opportunity, other than, I love the look back, I love the idea that he's already, that Eli has already been taking it upon himself to understandably not keep cars in these spaces, and that we will all be watching, but I don't see a way, frankly, that we can ultimately, my personal opinion at this moment, I can certainly be persuaded, as I have been in the past on other issues, but I don't see a way that the zoning bylaw, as written right now, would allow us to do anything other than approve this, I guess. That's the way I see the conundrums ending up.
And that's, that's the way I'd say that we saw it. Our action wasn't, you know, we're in this funky little spot where we want the issuance of the license, so we're going to have to go to the selectmen and say, we've done everything that we did, because, you know, frankly, they tasked us with that. They said, you know, we see this, you're going to have to show us more. So, in that spirit, that's why we put all of this together, and it's funny, because we said, well, we've already got an approval at this level, but, you know, our position isn't to say, oh, there's no distinction here. It's just to tackle the issue head-on. Again, it's right in Hingham Center, and everyone looks at it all the time, and frankly, he's going to be better off for it, everyone's going to be better off for it, because there's actually going to be throughput of cars that get repaired are going to get off-site. And the more that they're moved and they get off-site, not only is it the better for the, you know, the site operations, it's just better for Eli, his business model, and he sends a message to his customers that, you know, it's not going to linger here, we're going to, you know, we're going to move this stuff. And that's the position. So, to the extent that it's a little long, if, you know, you wanted it broken down, we could do that as well, but I just, I think we covered everything in here that we could think of for, you know, for the hours, et cetera, to get this put together.
One thing that the bylaw does give us purview over is the site plan, and I think if this came in as a new gas station, we would say, well, where's your drive aisle connecting one side of the gas station to the other? So, because this is a new use on a site, it kind of opens it up to site plan review, and so I disagree a little bit with you, Jen, in saying that the bylaw...
Again, it's right in Hingham Center, and everyone looks at it all the time. And frankly, he's going to be better off for it. Everyone's going to be better off for it because there's actually going to be throughput of cars that get repaired are going to get off-site. And the more that they're moved and they get off-site, not only is it the better for, you know, the site operations, it's just better for Eli, his business model, and he sends a message to his customers that, you know, it's not going to linger here, we're going to, you know, we're going to move this stuff. And that's, that's the position. So to the extent that it's a little long, if, you know, you wanted it broken down, we could do that as well. But I just, I think we covered everything in here that we could think of for, you know, for the hours, et cetera, to get, to get this put together.
One thing that the bylaw does give us review over is the site plan. And I think if this came in as a new gas station, we would say, well, where's your drive aisle connecting, connecting one side of the gas station to the other? So because this is a new use on a site, it kind of opens it up to site plan review. And so I disagree a little bit with you, Jen, in saying that the bylaw doesn't let us because we all know and acknowledge that bringing alcohol into the site is an additional use, right? You have to go to the board of selectmen to get the permit. So it's not business as usual. It's not crackers in addition to Mountain Dew. It's a new product that requires separate licensing. So to me, the biggest problem with this site is not adding the alcohol, is that it's a hard site to get in and out of on a regular day. When I rushed in on September 30th, I get my thing at 4:00 with a sticker, because you can't get through to the other side. So, you know, should there be another use on this site? I have no problem with a gas station selling beer if the board of selectmen say that, you know, that this operator is, you know, whatever, able to do that. Plenty of states allow that. I've bought beer at gas stations in other places.
In Massachusetts...
That doesn't seem to be the issue here. It's, can you add a new use onto this already very congested site?
Yeah, I, so...
You don't see it that way, because it's not on the...
No, you had me when you said the beer and wine is different. It's not, it's certainly not a new use, right?
Not by the zoning...
Right.
Not a zoning term.
It's convenience retail. So the strict constructionist side of me, that's some, mostly it's something that's held against me, but this is what our bylaw says, says, it's, you know, it doesn't matter. It's retail, you know, it's convenience retail. It, and it is, so that's, that's in a box, and that is what it is. The common sense side of me says it's going to be an additional offering that is different than Mountain Dew or root beer. So the question, you know, the question is, you know, it's 79 square feet of this pre-existing site. The only, you know, the only thing that happens on the site itself is that the parking spaces go from nine down to eight. So we go from an abundant, you know, a superabundance to a significant abundance, just, you know, just technically...
Right, no, and I agree with...
Yeah.
Everybody said we had, there are, there's enough parking on this site. The problem is if you go in on one side, you have to come, and there's people pumping gas, you have to leave on the same side. So you basically have two dead-end, two-way sides to this site...
In what...
That has nothing to do with the parking spaces. I agree that...
That's true.
There's plenty of parking.
And what I, what I believe, and that's the way that I look at it as well, I think what that's going to do is that's, you know, that's going to result, and maybe that's why it's the 80% of the people who are parked there who say, "I'm going to run in and get something now." And, you know, maybe it's just going to continue to be that because there is that functional, you know, it's a convenience store, but it's not convenient for me to come in here and not get gas and park over there. And it may be that, you know, he's going to miss out on some customers who say, "It's uncomfortable, you know, I don't like it," right, "unless there's no one there at the pump, I'm going to keep going up the street to the, to Main Street Market or the Cracker Barrel." That might just be the fact. But I think that on a building built in 1953, which for a whole lot of years just really was in disrepair, we've got an operator, local operator, he's been there for 13 years. He just put in, if you go there, you won't notice it. He notices it every day. There's a brand-new apron because he put all new tanks in underground. That canopy which he put up was a huge investment for him. He himself, you'll remember the lighting on all of that. We actually went in and re-researched. We changed the entire lighting spec. We wanted C4 lights, which are the dimmer lights. You'll remember those. That was generated by us because we said, you know, we've looked at the photometrics, and we said, "That's not going to, that's not going to fly in Hingham Center." So this is, this is a fellow who's, who's invested. The place is really starting to look great. And I think, I think once he's able to do this bump out, he's actually going to do the inside of that building. So when you walk in, it's not like an old, you know, kind of, it's, you know what I mean? Right now, it's just really still raw, I would say.
Yeah, the problem, not the inside of the building, the problem is the site plan. And so in my mind, because as Jen said, we don't, alcohol is not a separate use, it is convenience retail, so it doesn't, you know, I acknowledge that there is a flaw here in the way we can look at this. And so because it is just an additional retail, additional aspect of the retail use that's there, I like the, I like the look back. But I, but I will say it will be a...
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be a lot of work.
It's going to be a hard look back if it's not working.
Well, it's going to be, and it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work from his perspective, too. Admit it, because people fall into habits. Sometimes it isn't, you know, comfortable saying to someone, "I'll come pick it up" because it's got to be out of here. And that's something he's going to have to do. And he realizes that. And I, I'm heartened by the fact that when you go by, it's, there are, there are spaces that are available. And that tells me that he's taking this very seriously.
I don't see a lot of spaces available when I drive by.
Right.
So...
Yeah, I...
It's a great thing for a business owner to have, to have that going on. That's a good thing.
No, it doesn't make...
But how do you, I mean, how do you do the pickup and drop-off thing? How long you been doing that? I speak to council. I mean, how long you been doing that?
How long you been doing it?
I mean, he goes to...
We know for the last three months.
So if a guy's got a flat tire, how do you drive his car to the site? Do you tow it?
If a flat tire, we have a flat tire, we have to tow it. We'll fix it and we'll drop it back there.
And what's your turnaround time for getting the car back to someone's residence? I mean, I just...
Oh, I mean, if there's, if there's a, if there's a flat tire, he's got, he's got eight spaces, there's a flat tire, and somebody needs a tire done, and it has to be there for an hour.
But it's, I mean, I have something on my vehicle that needs to be maintained. I usually, usually can't be, can't be driven somewhere. You got to get it towed or...
Yeah.
I mean, I just...
So in the off-time that that happens, that's something that he's, he's...
It's a thing more than half an hour.
But it's something he's going to have to deal with. It, this is a 1953 site. Everything can't be like AJ's, which has, you know...
Would you be opposed to a condition that you hire an employee to regulate traffic in and out of the site?
The thinking is that with the person, good point. I think, I thought by having the person who's assigned to the counter, now the person who goes out and pumps the gas is not going to have to do, you know, kind of double-type pieces. So it's going to be an opportunity to have someone who can, you know, actually kind of see the site, figure out where people are going, you know, as far as, like, wait, wait up, you know, pull in or whatnot. What it's going to do is, it's going to shine a little more light on the site. And that's his thinking, is that it's going to bring it up to what people's modern expectations are. If, if they're not, people are not going to stop and come. So I think it's going to be, you know, I don't like to use the term self-regulating, but it's, that's what's going to happen. Someone's going to come through and say, "That's a hassle. I'm not going to go there." And there's going to be some number of people who, who want big, you know, rectilinear parking spaces with, you know, like, you know, AJ's down on Lincoln Street, right? It's, it's big, it's a rectangle, it's got multiple pumps, and, you know, Exxon or Mobile Oil is, you know, proud to be there. He's an independent operator. He's got, this has been a gas station since 1953. He's, he's, you know, he's the alternative. In town, we say, you know, we don't want, you know, we don't want the name, right? We like the independent business people. This is, here's your independent business person in Hingham Center in the business district A. This is, this is what we want.
So is the name going to change?
I agree, what we want, we want safe, safe parking.
Eli's Auto...
Eli's Alcohol and Auto?
Beer...
I mean, you know, like, it, this kind of little, this little convenience store could attract a few people, it could attract...
Well, they didn't change the Cracker Barrel to Cracker Barrel...
And wine.
And alcohol.
Right.
Main Street Deli is not...
People find it, so...
You know, it's, yeah, it's...
I'll give you a good example of what I'm thinking. You know, I go to a very popular restaurant in another community, and it was a restaurant...
Now I have to figure this out. Go ahead.
Little, little different. And they added a market, a market, and the, and their market was alcohol. Alcohol, but you get milk there, whatever. So the planning board in that community said, "We're going to, we're going to give you the A3, but we're going to make a condition that you hire somebody in that lot to make sure vehicles, get them in and out." You know, restaurants are much, much, much more intensive to use, but, I mean, we could add that condition.
Actually, what's going to happen is I'm going to have...
You have to use the microphone if you're going to talk.
Yeah.
Actually, that's what's going to happen, because we're only going to have two people, one inside and one pumping the gas, which is going to make it much more easier to get the floor going. And if anything, that people come to my gas station because of that, because we help them to get in and out, because most of like elderly people, people who doesn't want to pump their own gas, come to my place, and that's, and it becomes busier and busier. And then in order for me to hire two people, one inside and one outside, if I don't have an extra revenue, I can't have two people.
Is that in the plan, Mr. Tatchia? You're going to have, you're going to have two dedicated employees, one to work the counter, one to work the office?
Yes, yes. And we need somebody, we need some...
I didn't, I mean, I might have read...
Yeah, I think I...
Then we have to get, then we have to get to a good proposal.
Yeah, that, I mean, that...
Somebody on the pump, somebody stays inside, works the counter.
Yeah, I think I do it in...
The planned hiring of a dedicated retail...
To have alcohol on the premises, they need someone in the building at all times. So that's a requirement, that's...
Okay. Yep.
Well, then that could be a finding, right, that because, because that requires an additional employee.
Yeah, the planned hiring of a dedicated retail counter employee will increase both the level of convenience and retail revenues. And Eli recognizes this will require that parking be available to support the business plan and the investment. So that goes, you know, running into the last page.
Yes. Anything else?
No.
Beth, you've been very patient. We don't always do public comment on these modifications, but given your patience, welcome.
I'm Beth Rockloff, 36 Pleasant Street, and I'm concerned, as Judy said, with the increase of another use on the property. As it is, I brought a picture which was just, you know, if he's going to have somebody else inside the office, that's another parking person. So we've got two people working, one doing inspections, one doing repairs of cars, one pumping gas, and one now watching the alcohol. That's four parked cars. And we have eight spots. So we now have four spots left. Where are these people that are going to go to go now shopping there? Normally, you go in, you get your gas, he pumps it, it's wonderful, you can leave. You, you know, come in and, you know, leave your car to get an inspection, run around the corner, and you leave. But, you know, it's like, as we increase the usage, you're going to have more cars. And that section not only has a crosswalk at either entrance to where it is, it's a very often-used space for children coming and going before school and after school, which is the peak hours. And they go to the bagel store, which is high school haven, and they go to the cupcake store. And it also has a sort of separate entrance to one of the worst intersections in the town as it is, where they, but they left the cut-through, which you have people parking illegally, technically, I guess, on one side, using the pharmacy, dropping off their cleaning stuff. And you have the people that work in those shops parked behind. I have a picture here. It just was a random day. I'm driving across...
Can we see it?
There is a tractor-trailer guy parked across the front. He's delivering stuff to the pharmacy. There's a car that tried to cut through there, couldn't get through, had to turn around and come out the wrong way. There's a safety issue, and I'm really concerned with all the kids, with all the parking, that you add another usage to that area, somebody's going to get hurt.
I mean, I would, I would submit that these pictures are a fair and accurate representation of what I commonly see. It's a busy site.
Thank you.
Sure. You know, I mean, that little cut-through is a problematic cut-through. I see it as a separate issue from this. I mean, I understand that it compounds a busy area, and I understand it's right by the exit, but that is an existing condition of that neighborhood. That, I mean, if I lived there, I would go to the traffic committee and try to do something about that cut-through because I think it is dangerous, because people come whipping through there. It feels, it feels to me like a separate issue only because the way we define use is not what you and I are talking about as use. So, does that make sense? You know, adding the alcohol is not a change in use by zoning requirements. It's still a retail use on that site. You know, I share your concern with the traffic in the area. I feel like it's a separate issue here that bears watching, and anyway.
If I may, so that's, that's actually an extension of School Street. So that's part of the, you know, it's part of the right-of-way, maybe in the future...
The cut-through is an extension of School Street?
Yeah, it's not really a cut-through. It's, it is...
It's School Street.
It is School Street. So, I mean, maybe in the future, if the folks there, you know, get together and come up with a way to either, you know, maybe put a tractor-trailer, you know, a, you know, a lined-off area or additional...
A loading zone.
Or additional, you know, I mean, because Dependable comes in there, right, and they pick things up, et cetera. I mean, it is what it is, and it's been like that. I look at that, and I wonder, you know, why, you know, why the town can't incorporate that as, you know, additional spaces for the Hingham Center. But it's, you know, and I haven't seen the pictures, but I, you know, I see things there too when I'm at Dependable. It's just, it's questions of where is Hingham Center, you know, today, where's it been in the past? You know, there was alcohol sales. Dependable used to actually have alcohol sales. Atlantic Bagel, you know, during kind of my lifetime here is, you know, I thought was a package door, one of those spaces over in that corner. And it's just, you know, businesses come, they go, this transition. I think that Eastern Bank went a long way towards, you know, kind of regularizing the corner where they're at now. So I'm sure that it's better than it used to be, and in some areas, you know, maybe it doesn't work so, so well as, you know, where there's tractor-trailers and things of that nature. But I think that it makes sense for that district to come up with a plan at some point because it is a business district A. I mean, it's, you know, we own it, we've got it, that's the zoning, and I think everyone in there is kind of doing what they can to make it work. It's not perfect, but Hingham, you know, we're not a new, we're not, not everywhere's a, you know, a shopping mall that we can plan from scratch. And I think folks there are doing the best they can to use the onsite spaces where available. And then, you know, we've actually counted up the spaces that are available there on this street, and we've given you the hours of, for example, Atlantic Bagel, and then also, you know, Sadie Mae's. So it's, you know, what we see is those places shutting down before, when we anticipate that somebody's going to say, you know, "Oh, you know, we're having such-and-such for dinner. I was supposed to, you know, grab wine or whatnot." And that's going to be, you know, typically later in the day, those places close at, I think. I'll look it up. It's like 5:00 and 3:00 or something like that. Sadie Mae's is 9:00 to 5:00. Atlantic Bagel is 5:00 to 4:00. And we know what the number of, you know, spaces are over there. Will somebody park over there and walk all the way around? I wouldn't. But if somebody stops over in front of the pharmacy, is that, you know, is that something where you can walk over? Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think definitely.
So it appears, whatever frustrations we may have, the limitations of zoning suggests that there's not a great deal we can do about it here, or at least today. There may be future discussions that we might have on modifications on some of these things, or look at change in use, or whether it's convenient use with, with a more detailed definition, but those are discussions for another day. So before we approve the site plan modification, are there any findings that we wish to identify? And then there are the three conditions that we have prior to approval. Are there any findings in particular that we would want to identify now?
I noticed a couple during your deliberation, and I actually marked them down. And I'll just read out what I kind of marked down, and then you can tell me if I got it right. So the board found that, they noted that the project meets the requirements in the bylaw for parking, but did acknowledge that they've heard anecdotally that parking for the existing uses does spill off-site at times. The board, a board member found or noted that the alcoholic beverages really isn't broken out from retail sales, it's just convenience retail, and that, you know, this may be a weakness in our bylaw, but that's how it is. That's what the bylaw says right now. We heard that, we haven't seen this before, the alcohol being sold at a gas station, so this is new to the board in reviewing site operations. We heard that the planning board doesn't vote on the sale of alcoholic beverages, that's in the purview of the selectmen. And we heard a finding that there is a requirement for an additional employee to be inside for the retail, for the alcoholic beverage sales. And so now there'll be a dedicated employee outside at the pumps, who can also help direct traffic if needed during peak periods. Is that what you were getting at?
I think, if it's okay, Beth, I think we should enter these into the record as exhibits, exhibit A and B.
Did the board want to make any other findings about the ability of the site to support another traffic generating use? Or do you think you covered it? But I think we already covered the fact that in our bylaw, this is not considered another traffic generating use, which is where I feel like we are a little bit constrained in seeing this as another traffic generating use, even though our sense is that it's a, it's an enhanced, I guess, it, right, it's going to a more popular product, right? It seems to me that, that there will be a significant amount of pedestrian traffic going to that use from just neighboring homes, you know, as a convenience that way, so maybe the additional parking requirement won't be there. I don't know what to say about School Street. I mean, that, that does seem to be an existing problem.
I mean, I think the site operations overview does help, and I think it's a good idea that you do this. I wish I had a little more detail to it, just in terms of movement of vehicles in and out of the spots, but the hours of operation is helpful. I just have to comment, you know, we, we certainly like to do look backs, I just don't know how effective they are with addressing problems. I mean, I don't know if we, we've never done a look back where we've added conditions, I don't even know if we can do that.
And certainly, what would you do is say, well, you have to stop selling beer?
Yeah, we can't do that.
And you can't, once the beer permit's issued.
Can we add conditions to the permit, add a look back? Identify problems?
I mean, you need to be clear as to what the scope of the look back is going to be, but you have to be realistic. If the alcohol permit is granted, and, you know, over the next year, the experience is that the neighbors complain, and there's all sorts of problems, those are site plan violations, but it has no bearing on the alcoholic sales. If there's a ton of site plan violations, the building commissioner could compel the applicant to come back to us, and we could take the position that you're clearly in violation of the site plan, you need a special permit, A3. That still doesn't speak to, you know, you can't claw back the sale of alcoholic beverages. Once that's granted, that's there. So if there's a look back, the board needs to be specific about what you might do. I mean, it's not, you know, am I not getting this, you know?
I don't disagree. I think if, if there's a, you know, a violation of the site plan review, I mean, you know, usually a visit or a letter from Mr. Clancy gets people's attention. The other thing, I just wanted to say to Bill's comment is, kind of in an anecdotal, all of the look backs that I've been involved in with these traffic, when we go forward and we say, okay, we're, we're jumping into, you know, in unknown, they've generally, when we do the look backs, we look at them and we say, okay, it's working. And I'm thinking of like the shipyard, I think we did a look back on Boston Golf, there must be, you know, several others, but usually I counsel clients to, you know, let's offer a look back, let's encourage a look back, because they have a nice way of making people incentivize, you know, in the real world, to, to live up, because they know that there's going to be, you know, that opportunity to come back. So that's why I typically, you know, don't, you know, shy away from them, and that's why we offered that in the first instance here. I think, I'm encouraged, Bill doesn't see it in the last X number of weeks. I have, in that I've been looking at it for a while, and I saw how bad it was, I actually see how, you know, how much better it's been. So, I mean, that's, it's going to be on him, right? And I'm going to have to also make the same presentation to the selectmen, you know, and that's going to be the question. That's, that's what we walked out of there, saying, yep, we hear there's a problem, and, you know, I don't, you know.
So I guess my question is, why?
Smart enough to say, yeah.
Why is it better? What's he doing differently now that made, that made it better?
He's going to, he's moving, he's getting the cars, he's not letting them stay, he's not letting them linger. When, when the car is repaired.
See, see, I would like something along those exact lines in this O&M plan, that says, how is he going to ensure that not lingering? The hours of operation is very good.
So what he's going to.
But how is he going to do that?
What he's going to do is, he's going to give customers the option, the local customers the option, that he will pick, excuse me?
I'll draw the back.
Yeah, he, he'll pick the car up, he'll actually go, pick the car up, repair it, return the car to the, to the home. That way you don't have people coming in for a repair on a Tuesday saying, I'm going to drop my car off. Some people may say, no, you know, I mean, I think that that's going to be his first instance, and he's been doing that. And people, you know, his clients, he knows his clients, they trust him to know where they live, pick the car up, and then return it. So that's been working, and that's another advantage to, you know, your local business person, as opposed to, you know, a Firestone or something like that, that there's no accountability, you know, employees, you know the owner, he's going to offer that in the first instance.
Is there some kind of assurance that you can give us that the four parking spaces on the left side of the site would not be used for the long-term parking of?
On the south side.
Of service, you know, like you, you talk of service customers, so that those four spaces over there, you know, whether you drive the car back to the person's home, or they pick it up in 10 minutes, that's up to you. I think the proof is in, are there cars sitting on the site or not for extended periods of time? And if you're saying that those four spaces on the east side are sufficient for the service station, then, then there shouldn't be parking on the west side.
So it'll be automotive, automotive repair cars shall be parked on the north, in the north four spaces. And that's, that, I didn't put it in there, that's the intent, because I didn't think that convenience people would necessarily want to park there.
I know, but I think that's what's happening, is that all the cars are becoming full, all the spaces have become filled with cars that are just left there, and so there's no space. But if you just tell us, you know, the, the spaces on the left side of the lot will not have cars in them for any longer than it takes to run in and get some, a few things, or?
Or they'll be dedicated to that. Like, and you could, you could, in your O&M plan, you could say that, you know, vehicles, owners of vehicles will have 24 to 48 hours to pick up a service vehicle, or I'm going to, or I am going to drive it to their house. You could, you can have a plan for queuing of vehicles waiting to get sticker inspections. That's always a problem at a gas station. You have, if somebody's in the bay, another vehicle pulls up waiting for a sticker, and they're just kind of sitting there, queuing, and it's encumbering people going to the pumps, people pulling out the lot spots, the bay, the bade vehicle needs to back out, right, and then move, and, because your, your site is so unique, it does, I mean, it creates problems. You know, an O&M plan could address how are you going to queue those vehicles, or are you only going to allow one at a time to wait in line? Or to Judy's point, you can dedicate spots specifically for your, your new commercial use.
What might be a better condition would be to say that the southern parking spaces shall not be utilized for service vehicle storage.
Good with that, Eli?
And that way, that's, you know.
That's good, that helps.
Yeah, because then, if you need to, some, a car needs to stay for 10 days, as long as it's only one car, and it's not causing parking in those four spaces.
Right, yeah, I mean, you have people who want to go in and buy the alcohol, or.
Right, there, there's a place for them to go.
They have a dedicated spot, they have dedicated parking for that. I mean, that's good, helps.
So would we want there to be signs? I mean, would we want them to put signs in the parking spaces? I mean, how?
He's going to have to police it himself.
We can condition signage.
Well, he's the one parking it there, though, right? So, I mean, if it's a, if it's a repair vehicle, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not so sure.
It's a small site, busy.
There's not a lot of snow storage area, and, I mean.
Oh, no, we, we mentioned the snow storage. What he does do is, he plows it to the north, northeast corner, and it is removed from sight, that is what he does.
That is something we could consider in a look back, if we needed, you know, think about what else could we do? We could prescribe signage, or we could get more specific on the.
Yeah, that's, I would just suggest, just thinking, if, if in the first instance, we can have it on his staff, I'm just thinking, more signs, more clutter, more things, lesses might be more in this nice spot.
Right, but my point was, we talked about what specifically we want to think about in a look back, and that's a detail that.
A dedicated employee deals just with traffic, is potential, like I said earlier?
Well, I, I do think that what, what Jen is saying is that it, like, in a year, if it's not working out, then we have to take measures to ensure that those four spaces are not, you know, 15-minute parking, or whatever it is.
Right.
And that that would become an enforcement mechanism beyond what, what we're asking for today.
That is what I'm saying, thank you.
Right.
For making it more clear, yes.
Convenience parking only, or whatever.
Yeah, well, we talked about having the look back have more teeth, or be more specific, so that's what I mean.
I think potential look back condition being that you'd have to hire a dedicated employee just to deal with traffic is incentive to, to make sure things go well there. That's, that would be, that would be an expensive condition for a business owner. So, all right, I'm going to give up.
Thank you.
So the conditions that we, that we have are that all previous conditions from the original site plan approval are in full force and effect, that the site shall be operated in compliance with the site operations overview submitted August 6, 2018, and all representations made during the course of this hearing. So that includes the suggestions that have been made for the site operations overview. And that the applicant will submit a request to the board one year after completion of the improvement set forth within the site plan review approval, to review any incidents or issues related to parking or at or adjacent to the property, to ensure that the site is operating efficiently. The planning board will send butter notices once the review has been scheduled. Do, do we want to add detail to that condition?
So I inserted after the word "efficiently," including not using convenience parking for service cars, and I also penciled in a condition number four, the southern parking spaces shall not be utilized by the service operation.
That's a good one, that's a good condition.
Yeah, and the, and we, in the findings, you have about the third employee, right? Okay, sounds good to me.
About the employee for the pumps?
Yes.
Yeah, that, with the addition of alcohol, there will be somebody outside.
Correct.
Which is, yeah, which is consistent with the operations plan. All right, with those conditions, can I have a motion to approve the site plan modification for Nine Short Street?
So moved.
With the findings as discussed.
As discussed.
And the conditions.
Yeah, and the conditions as discussed.
Second?
Second.
No one in favor?
Hi.
Good luck, sir.
Thank you, thank you for coming in, good luck.
I mean, it is good to see your business doing well. Don't take this conversation the wrong way. We're happy you're doing well.
I'll be there, August 30th, 2016.
Get my sticker, and maybe I'll stop in to the cooler, I don't know.
Thank you.
All right, good luck, sir.
And thank you, Beth, for coming, because I think that is.
Yeah, thank you for the pictures.
I have minutes for you on the printer, let me go grab them.
All right, in the interim, there's been a motion to, I guess we're just tabling the FRD endorsement of plans discussion until next October 4th, so the first, I don't think that needs a vote.
And I had a question about that. I was on the original Oakwood Circle.
Thank you.
Decision, but not on the FRD approval, so I don't know where I stand as far as this. Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's a nice paper.
Fancy paper.
All right.
So that was that.
That was absolute, I guess, but I can.
Okay, so if I may, the discussion about Oakwood Circle is going to be tabled until the meeting of October 1st. That's a two-part discussion, the first part is about endorsement of plans, and although we all agree what needs to be kind of massaged and finalized with regard to the legal documents and the plans, they weren't quite to the level of satisfaction of counsel or myself. And honestly, we got in the material at like 1:00 this afternoon, there just wasn't time, you know, to the last-minute kind of scrutiny, some days you just don't have the ability to build that into your schedule. So for the sake of completeness, we all agreed that that conversation would be just bumped out a week to October 1st. With regard to Judy Snee's question, the question about endorsing the plans is like a new question, and it's not part of a hearing that's been ongoing, that we worry about mullens. So it's like a brand-new request, should we endorse the plans? So Judy, you are perfectly allowed and to sit on that, and I did, I was talking with John Coughlin about some other things, and we, we discussed it, and he agrees with that assessment, that it's a brand-new question.
Okay.
Should we endorse the plans?
Yep.
So you're good to go, as long as you come next week.
I will meet you next week.
And the other part of the question was, you know, it's an A3, so with regard to that finding, we do need to have the four people to make a finding, if you are, because it's a supermajority to approve it, it's a supermajority for the finding. So that was the other kind of process question.
Then we'll get to it next week?
Yeah, we'll get to it next week. So we have the minutes from August 13th. If folks have had a chance to review those, any questions or modifications?
I have read them.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain, as I was absent.
You abstain on that one? You were here for the 10th, though, right?
Yes, so I will make a motion, we act favorable in the midst of September 10th, 2018.
Second? All in favor?
Aye. Can I just make a comment on the minutes, is that okay?
Yeah.
These minutes are fabulous, they're very, very, very thorough, I would just, just hit the pause button long enough to say, I know Sherri's new, and she's clearly doing the minutes, and they're fabulous. We have, in the past, however, taken the position that they should be a bit more summary. So, this is all, this is borderline a transcription, and we've not gone in that direction in the past, so I just wonder if we want to maybe just give a little more direction in terms of maybe just more summary in the future? Because, you know, we've run into problems with that in the past.
Will do. And fairness, they are fabulous, I haven't even really had time to edit them, so, but as far as what they have in them, they're fabulous.
Comprehensive.
Right, it's all accurate, that's right.
Doing a good job.
Yeah.
She's a good addition to the Manny Boy team.
We're very lucky.
Any other administrative reports, Mary?
I did want to say, just remind you that you have your site visit on the 20th, that we did talk about earlier, and I did also want to just mention, let me flip to my notes. So we have the site visit on October 20th for 143 Summer Street, and currently, I know not everyone can attend, but a couple of you have said that you would, so I'm hopeful that we can keep that schedule. And I did go out with Sherri, we completed the fieldwork related to the downtown Hingham Overlay District, so I just want to just tell you that that's forging ahead, and I want to remind you all that you agreed to add a meeting on October 15th, dedicated to that, the potential bylaw changes. And I have gone ahead and let our advisory liaisons know about that hearing too. So, that should be an exciting time, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Mary.
Excellent. Motion to adjourn?
It's removed.